Good evening and welcome to the March 7, 2024 Board of County Commissioners Comprehensive Plan Amendment Public Hearing. Now, the Board of County Commissioners will consider the adoption of amendment to the future land use map of the comprehensive plan, as well as concurrent application for major modification to a plan development zoning for the property subject to the map amendment. The board will also consider the transmittal of text amendments to the future land use section of the comprehensive plan for state review. Before I pass things over to the Planning Commission staff to introduce the first item, I also want to announce that I have a scheduling conflict and need to leave at 7:30, so if we're not finished by then, I'll be passing things over to the vice chair and made him aware of that as well. So with that, I hand things over to Melissa to introduce the first item.
Thank you. Good evening. Melissa Zornito with the Planning Commission. The first item is HCCPA 2218. It's a small-scale plan amendment, and it'll be presented by Ms. Gillian Massey.
Good evening.
Good evening. Again, my name is Gillian Massey with Planning Commission staff, and I'll be presenting HCCPA 22-18 on behalf of Carla Yanos. This is Sims Road and East Bay Road. This is a privately initiated, small-scale map amendment to change the future land use category on 8.40 acres from residential six and residential nine to residential 20. The proposed plan amendment was originally part of the October 2022 cycle, and since then, it has been paired with rezoning 22-0671, which we will present after this application. The subject site is located in the South County area, west of Interstate 75 and East Bay Road, north of Sims Road, and south of Honeywell Road. The property is located in the urban service area and within the limits of the Gibsonton and South Shore area-wide systems plan. This slide shows the immediate area within a half-mile radius of the subject site. The area is composed of single-family detached residential and agricultural uses. There are agricultural uses to the southwest, and the area is predominantly a single-family detached residential. The average height of the existing development in the area does not exceed 35 feet in height. There are fewer, there are few newer developments to the northeast of the site which show smaller lot sizes. However, the average lot size is a quarter of an acre, and multifamily is not found within this area. This photo shows a northbound view on East Bay Road. The subject site is on the west side of the road, and there are no, there are sidewalks on both sides of the street. This photograph shows the southbound view on East Bay Road, and where the subject site is, is on the right side of this photo. This photo shows standing at the entrance of the property along Sims Road, and there are no sidewalks on the north side of Sims Road. This is a view of the intersection of East Bay Road and Sims Road while standing at the entrance of the property along Sims Road. The adopted future land use is composed of 4.51 acres of residential six and 3.89 acres of residential nine. Both future land use categories allow for residential, suburban-scale neighborhood, commercial, office uses, multipurpose projects, and mixed-use developments. The residential six future land use category allows for up to six dwelling units per gross acre and a 0.25 floor area ratio for non-residential uses. The residential nine future land use category allows for up to nine dwelling units per gross acre and up to five points, or 0.50 floor area ratio for non-residential uses. The request is to change the future land use category to residential 20, which allows for up to 20 dwelling units per gross acre and up to 0.75 floor area ratio for non-residential uses. The area surrounding the subject site is composed of residential six to the north, northwest, west, east, and northeast. To the south is suburban mixed-use six, future land use category, and to the west by Echo Road is residential four, future land use category. Overall, the area is composed of densities and intensities that do not typically surpass six dwelling units per gross acre or a floor area ratio of 0.50. The request for residential 20 introduces a higher density and intensity than what is observed throughout the area. This slide compares the development impacts between the different land use categories, existing and proposed. The total potential development under the existing categories combined are 62 dwelling units per acre, or 62 total dwelling units, and up to 133,838 square feet of non-residential uses subject to locational criteria. Under the proposed future land use category, the dwelling units would double to 168 dwelling units and up to approximately 275,000 square feet of non-residential uses subject to locational criteria. Overall, the density and intensity would increase if this amendment were approved, and it would also introduce multifamily uses throughout the area. Planning Commission staff has analyzed the proposal and found that overall, it's not consistent with the growth management objectives and policies of the comprehensive plan. Policy 1.4 indicates that development must be compatible with the surrounding area. The proposed development significantly increases density of the property and does not achieve a uniform, consistent development pattern. The increase of density would cause a disruption in the overall, the overall development pattern, and may set a premature precedent in creating high-density urban development. Planning Commission staff agrees that multifamily is needed in the county, but it is better situated in high-density areas within walking distance to daily goods and services. Staff has conducted a site visit and saw that most of the area has a suburban, is suburban in style with most of the properties on larger lots with single-family residences, and there are no multifamily developments within proximity to the site. The proposed comprehensive plan amendment is also not consistent with objective 16 and some of the associated policies relating to neighborhood and community development. Staff has analyzed the surrounding density and has found that none of the single-family developments within a half-mile of the site exceeds six dwelling units to the acre, and this makes the request incompatible with the surrounding densities. The proposed plan amendment is also inconsistent with the Gibsonton Community Plan and South Shore Area-Wide Systems Plan. The land use strategy goal two and goal four B of the community plan talk about the revitalization of neighborhoods, riverfront area, Gardenville Recreation Center, and older commercial areas to improve and enhance neighborhoods, and encourages new developments with a range of housing choices. Plan amendments are not typically tied to a site plan, but the concurrent rezoning shows three proposed development options, and one of them is for affordable housing. The affordable housing option is one that is not guaranteed, and that would result, the affordable housing is one of the options and is not guaranteed, that that would be the development result. Therefore, staff needs to look at the plan amendment holistically and analyze it from the point of view as if other uses would be developed. Overall, staff has found that the proposed plan amendment is incompatible with the surrounding area, with the surrounding uses, and premature in its request, does not allow for development that is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan. And therefore, Planning Commission has recommended that the proposed map amendment be found inconsistent with the comprehensive plan, and I'm available for questions.
All right, thank you. The applicant, please come forward. Each representative will be given three minutes.
Do you know how to pull it up? Do you have a phone?
Good evening.
We do.
William Malloy, 325 South Boulevard, proudly representing Jim and Betsy Johnson this evening here tonight. I'm just going to provide you with a little bit of context for the request, and then I shall get right out of the way. First of all, where we are, this is the first slide, and I think it's a very important one. It shows the project in relation to the Walmart just to the north, to the Charter School just to the east. There's another commercial node, including a hotel to the north. We have mobile homes and single-family to the north. And then, of course, we're at the major intersection of Sims and East Bay. Next slide. Commissioners, this was filed almost two years ago. That's how long we've been at this. I inherited the case actually from the late, great Michael Horner, and at its outset, all the major mods sought to do was accelerate the existing entitlements a little bit. As we were progressing through that process, we were also doing ongoing marketing and outreach efforts to see what we could do with the property post-zoning. And while we quickly realized there was no one particularly interested in townhomes or the commercial element, we were approached independently by several nonprofit affordable housing groups who had interest in the site. That led to the filing of this petition before you tonight. These interactions, again, led us down a whole new path as we talked with these philanthropic groups, and it really identified for us a significant need, a vacuum of workforce or affordable housing, not just in Hillsborough County, but in Gibsonton. Even in the Planning Commission's presentation, you heard there are no apartments in Gibsonton. There certainly shouldn't be apartments all over Gibsonton, but there's none. We want to change that. Excuse me. Also, pardon me. I think I lost a page here. There we go. Commissioners, on top of the holistic approach that we took to this and wanting to provide affordable housing, there are some harsh economic realities that we had to overcome, and one of those is the economy of scale here. You cannot do multifamily, especially affordable multifamily, at too few units. That's why the request is for the R20 tonight. I can't stress enough that my clients are wonderful people. They made the decision that they wanted this project, as they are longtime residents of the community, to be their legacy in the community. And Jim will speak more to this as he's up. I can tell you that we've met with Cheryl Howell and with Brenda Brackens. We have the project blessed as acceptable and eligible for the benefits under the affordable housing bonus in the comp plan. And what we're asking for now is your help in pulling this together to make this project happen. We know it's a big ask. We know it's a lot of units, but we think it's the perfect place for it, and we think Hillsborough County, and more importantly, Gibsonton, needs it. We want to change the status quo. There shouldn't be no apartments in Gibsonton. Next, Mr. Johnson will discuss the history of the project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Jim Johnson. I reside at 19255 Hidden Oaks Drive, Brooksville, Florida. My wife, Betsy, and I are the property owners, and we were 18-year residents of the area from 1999 to 2017. You know, we've, we've long recognized the need for affordable housing, and we've, have and continue to try to address that need ourselves through some rental properties that we still have in the area. I think this evening for you Commissioners, I want to point out a couple of key aspects. You're going to hear some, I guess, consistent themes that, you know, Gibsonton, and they have a particular bearing on the comp plan amendment and the zoning, are historically lower, lower income, Gibsonton's a historically lower-income community. Right now, it presents no housing choices other than single-family residents and mobile homes. There's affordable affordability challenges for many of the residents, and especially acute to tonight's hearing, and the requests in front of you is developers have just simply neglected to address Gibsonton's multifamily and other housing needs. You know, we've also, besides some of the efforts that Billy spoke to, you know, we did a reach, an outreach with marketing and community outreach efforts, and, and we, one key thing that came across was the fact that there, many residents just can't simply buy or rent single-family residences. And we did some exploration of, you know, what are some of the obstacles, and we ran across this issue with harsh economic realities and really the lack of supportive zoning to help mitigate some of these challenges. In response to that, we went ahead and amended our zoning and went for the comprehensive plan amendment. I do also want to point out that we've had, I personally have had significant efforts with the county's capital programs department because the county is looking to put in a roundabout there at the intersection. And one of the things that we worked with them because we know that a lot of people who are housing-challenged are also transportation-challenged, I sought and secured an agreement with the capital programs department to include as part of the roundabout a bus stop. And my wife and I, in fact, are agreeing to pay for the construction of the pad as, as kind of a first step to getting future bus service to the area. Lastly, I just want to kind of point out with this last slide here is that there is a commercial node to the north, a charter school to the, to the east. I guess with the remaining time that I have here, I do want to really stress, especially with the charter school, that it opens doors. You know, a lot of, a lot of residents who are housing-challenged are also transportation-challenged, and a lot of people know that you don't have busing service when you have charter schools. And so this property provides walkability to that, to that charter school. So. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Appreciate your comments.
Thank you, Jim. Good evening. Isabel Albert with HAF. I'm a certified planner. Address is 1,000 North Ashley Drive. As you heard tonight, the request is to do a comprehensive plan, map amendment from residential six and nine to residential 20. And also, you've seen that the site is located well in the middle of the urban service area. It is not only within the urban service area, but it's also located along a major collector roadway between Gibsonton area as well as all the way to Riverview area. But not only that, it's also located on Base Road, which is also another major collector from Gibsonton Drive all the way down to the Preserve down south. But not only the fact that it's located within the urban service area, but all the infrastructures and everything that could support this request is already in place. And so this shows it's an ideal location for this kind of request. The request is also in line with the Gibsonton Community Plan, more specifically, the area wanting to be revitalized, the old neighborhoods, and that also includes the mobile home parks. And by doing that, the vision is to, or the goal is to introduce new residential development, and that would also include different housing types such as multifamily development, and that would further the vision of this goal. And then also, strategy is to do that is to have communications and joint ventures with, with the different developers and groups and organizations to provide some kind of workforce housing in the area. And as you heard, the Johnsons have done that since day one. For at least two years, they've had discussions with different groups and organization to see how they can achieve this goal and this vision. And another strategy, again, is the walkability to provide sidewalks along Sims Road. In that way, you would have opportunities to be able to walk within a quarter-mile distance to not only the retail, but also educational purposes. The housing need is found in the housing policy element where they encourage the density bonus for affordable housing, but not only the housing element, but the future land use elements also supports some higher density by providing other incentives to do that. And they also would see, and they imagine that the higher density will be located along major collector roads, major roadways, which we have established that this is in fact the case. Future land, future land use element also guides growth and infill policies within the urban service area. This request absolutely fits and meets this request. It also meets the neighborhood protection, and the neighborhood protection is designed or it's addressed through techniques, planning techniques, which you'll see at the zoning level where you can see and establish regulations and conditions in order to address that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other representatives? Okay, we're going to the public hearing. Each speaker will have three minutes. We have two individuals that have signed up. First is Regina Hernandez, followed by Buddy Harwell. Ms. Hernandez here? Okay, Buddy Harwell.
I am.
Okay, Mr. Harwell.
We enjoyed you out in our area today. Buddy Harwell, lifelong citizens, Hillsborough County, grew up in the Gibsonton area for first 38 years of my life, and moved out to Baum 20 years ago to try to get away from it, and gets to follow me, damn it. Anyways, represent the concerned citizens of Gibsonton. I am the president. This is a list of names that have signed an injunction of this rezoning, this CPA. All this was filed into, into the ZHM hearing. This was part of the applicant's information. It said this, if, when, you know, when's the time and everything else? Okay. When we have infrastructure, when we have enough water, when we have enough first responders, and then where? This is too dense of an area for this location. These are two substandard roads. This belongs in Bloomingdale. This is a map showing the applicant's section. This is the nearest CM 20, several miles away. There's also different, when we have community profile, there's different weaknesses and stuff, infrastructure, lack of, you know, commercial, lack, several other things, community This shows 7,500 residents. This is probably about four years old, so 7,500 residents move, well, leave the area to find jobs every day. This talks about, you know, no improvements in the area. This one shows the, the CM 20. There's only 12 acres in the area. Most of it is six suburban. The nine, you can see five acres, and then it goes less than that. Commissioner Myers, you heard, we want commercial and no more houses at the town hall. Commissioner Owens, you said no apartments and stuff in your area. Help us out. They say there's no apartments in Gibsonton, Nundy, Ingloria, Bowfall Creek, they forget Big Ben area, East Bay High School is Gibsonton, Kings Point, not Kings Point, Keans Crossing and stuff. The Planning Commission found it inconsistent. Apartments does not, this dense of an area does not belong here.
Thank you, sir. This time, the applicant will have a three-minute rebuttal.
William Malloy again, for the record. I very much appreciate Buddy's comments, and I understand where he's coming from, especially in the rooftops versus jobs conundrum. A few points I'd like to directly address. This site, this project, is well-served by infrastructure. We have water and sewer available. We'd be replacing several, what, almost a dozen, mobile homes that are on well-inseptic currently on the project. In terms of first responders, granted, I'm not sure that the emergency response in South County is exactly what it should be, but we're providing another housing alternative for those very first responders who could maybe live where they work now. When Buddy says that we're leaving, that people are leaving to find jobs, I would challenge that. I think they're leaving to go to work. They're leaving Gibsonton to go to work. They need, they, the citizens, need more affordable workforce housing in Gibsonton. I'm not sure where it starts, if the dog, the dog is wagging the tail, but there is no workforce housing in Gibsonton, and that's what we're trying to offer this evening. I'm going to leave my next two minutes to Mr. Johnson to finish the rebuttal.
Yeah, I, I think after listening to some of the comments from Buddy, and we met with Buddy and some other concerned citizens, you know, this opportunity or this site is, you know, a very unique site. It's, there's just not a lot of residential infill locations in Gibsonton. And so what, and you'll hear this during the zoning too, but, you know, we talked to a lot of developers of manufactured housing and, or multifamily housing, I should say, and a lot of the developers came back to us and said, we simply cannot make it work in Gibsonton. That's why we're not bringing any of the That's why we're not bringing any of the apartment projects that you see elsewhere in the county. And so when we explored that, the reasons that we heard was the lower income levels in the community and that the, they can't just make it work economically. And so that's been, that's been a real struggle. And so, you know, this, this project, and I think I'll go back to this slide here that we had earlier, you know, this, this is, I think, kind of the uniqueness of this project is that, you know, the aspiration of good land planning is to have a project with mixed use aspects that are well within walking distance. And this site has this. And so that's really, I think, a potential opportunity here. You hear in the news all the time, we need to do more for affordable housing. We'll hit that theme again during our zoning presentation. But there's just a lot of citizens who just don't have housing opportunities. And we're trying to, I guess, thread that needle where we can make that work based on the economics that are there for the, for the community and what developers are willing to do. All right. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate the rebuttal time.
Thank you, sir. The vote on the CPA will occur after our argument on the major modification. This time, I'd ask the clerk to administer the oath to anyone who plans on speaking on the major modification.
Please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Thank you, Senator.
All right, thank you. You may be seated.
Staff can introduce you, Adam.
Good evening, Commissioners. The next item is Agenda I, A2. This is a major mod application, 22-0671. This is a request for a major modification to approximately 7.13 acre parcel located on the north side of Sims Avenue. The request is for a major modification to add a third development option to the project. Again, here's a close-up of the project again at the corners, northwest corner of Sims Avenue and East Bay. The request is to add a third option. The first, it has two development options now. Currently, the first option allowing for a mix of commercial and office uses. The second option, 64 townhomes, is part of this request. They're maintaining the existing first option regarding the commercial office uses for the townhome option, increasing the unit count to 110 units without any bonuses. And then they're also proposing the option to do the gray water density bonus for that option to get up to 148 townhomes. The third option would be a multifamily development option where, without any density bonuses, they would be permitted 142 multifamily units. With affordable housing density bonus, they would be permitted up to 199 multifamily dwelling units. And then with a gray water density bonus, they would be permitted a maximum of 191 units. Staff did find this, based on the concurrent RES 20 plan request and based on that perspective, if the RES 20 plan amendment was approved, staff did find this request compatible with the surrounding development area and recommend approval subject to conditions. The hearing officer also did recommend approval subject to conditions, but the Planning Commission did find this request inconsistent. Staff's available for any questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you. This time, the applicant will have 10 minutes for their presentation.
Commissioners, good evening again. William Malloy, 325 South Boulevard. Presuming the fundamentals are covered, we'll get right into the meat and potatoes of the zoning here. This is a zoning modification to an existing approved PD, and we're proposing three options. And this is critical here. Option A proposes no change from the existing commercial entitlements. Option B is a pure townhome project, which goes from 66 to 110 units, but 142 would be the max. We're only proposing 110. Option C is the new kid. We're proposing 109 multifamily units, 40% of which would be affordable. But again, we could be at nearly 250 with the density bonuses that we're eligible for. The numbers that we indicated in B and C are not random. We reverse engineer them so that the impacts are under the threshold of the previously established trip counts. That is, none of these options should create or will create any more traffic than what's already approved. I think that's crucial, this request, knowing the magnitude of the density we're asking Again, as to traffic, another critical component of this effort is the proposed roundabout that has been funded and is actively, I believe, under design at the intersection of Sims and East Bay. The Johnsons have worked closely with the CIP folks, distinctly Miss Aubain. And we had actually a site visit. We had 14 members of staff out there looking at the property. Through the back and forth with the Johnsons and the county, the preservation area has nearly doubled for that roundabout. So they're giving up more than double the dirt they would have through this zoning now. But it makes it a better roundabout and a better plan. That concludes my part of the presentation. I'm going to hand it off to Isabel now to talk about the planning aspects.
Thank you very much, Billy. For the record, Isabel Albert with half, 1,000 North Ashley Drive. So just straight off again, the request that we're asking for is totally consistent with a comprehensive plan. You can look at the development within the urban service area, providing the minimum density, as well as the neighborhood protection. The neighborhood protection, you know, here, like compatibility is not the same as, you've heard this over and over, it's done through planning techniques and how you design your site. And so this is how we came up to this design. Over the couple of years, we have designed this as providing the building closer to the road and having the parking area towards the rear. And so that would transition, create some kind of a transition from the I-75 corridor towards the residential to the west. And that is a transition techniques that we're using doing site planning design. Also part of the request, although we can request, with the density bonus, higher density, we're capping it at 199 units. And also, we lowered the original request of height from 65 to 45. And with that, that was addressing staff's concern for compatibility. And again, you know, this put a lot of thought into it to provide something that would be compatible with the area as well as consistent with the comprehensive plan. Next, we'll come, Michael Yates. Thank you.
Good evening, Michael Yates with Baum Traffic. And I want to go through the trip comparison that Mr. Malloy referred to in his part of the presentation. So what you see on the screen is the max limits of the commercial office component that was approved previously. And then, so option A, under the new application, is the exact same. So there is no change to the office commercial component. Option B shows the slight increase in the number of townhome units, which also illustrates that we were below the option A previously. And then Scenario C, option C, shows the 199 multifamily units, which again is less in daily trips, AM peak hour trips, and PM peak hour trips from the previous approval. And so to illustrate this a little more, we've shown here the option three, daily at 9:03, AM 76 and PM 78. What that shows is a difference from option A and the previous approved max, 483 daily trips, 30 AM peak hour trips, and 59 PM peak hour trips. So that's the end of my presentation. I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Johnson to finish up.
Good evening again, Commissioners. My name is, again, it's Jim Johnson. I'm the property owner. Really, today in Gibsonton, there's really no, it's really undeniable, there is no housing choices beyond single-family residences and mobile homes. Really, what's critically missing are apartments and that provide a viable and affordable housing choice, especially for younger working families. Why are there no apartments in Gibsonton today? And I'm talking about any new apartment developments, even, you know, here most recently. Again, Gibsonton is a traditionally lower-income community. They simply, the community simply cannot support the market rate rents that are found elsewhere in Tampa. When you consider this and other challenges, developers have historically had few incentives to bring apartments to Gibsonton. Tonight, we're here seeking supportive zoning, and we're hopeful post-zoning to work on private-public partnerships to overcome some of these challenges. And really, just to drive the point home is, we're seeking to change the status quo, change the existing paradigm where there just aren't other housing choices for residents in Gibsonton. Just, just to, I guess, give you our project's vision, we're seeking to bring an apartment project to the heart of Gibsonton. One that is walkable to nearby retail, schooling, and places of employment. One that provides alternative and affordable housing choices, targeting individuals and families with income under 120% of AMI, and doing so in conjunction with the county's affordable housing bonus. And really, you know, should our zoning success, effort be successful, then we want to focus in having all or a significant part of the project dedicated to providing housing for military families and also other public servants. I guess on that last point, you know, as a veteran myself, I know the challenges that military families have to find affordable housing. That's especially acute here in Tampa. There's a lot of airmen who simply cannot afford to find affordable housing in South Tampa. It's just too expensive. And so, you know, again, we're looking to try to, I guess, bring in a viable choice there in Gibsonton for those individuals and also other residents. I think it's important to also provide some context tonight. You've heard repeatedly that it's unaffordable to buy and rent single-family residences. And so along those lines, I just want to put some numbers to that. You know, to buy a typical four-bedroom, three-bath house is going to require monthly mortgage payments beginning around $2,500. If you add PMI, insurance, real estate taxes, maintenance, that inflates that cost even more. Conversely, the same homes to rent in Gibsonton will run between $2,250 and $3,000 per month. And again, the challenge here is, you know, many families just simply can't afford rent that's over $2,000 a month. You know, especially younger families and those that work in the service sector. So this slide here, you know, we looked a little bit at income, but we also want to look at, I'm sorry, cost, but also look at income. And as this slide shows, it shows the area median income at 100% is $89,400. I want to put this in perspective with some of the occupations that we have in South County. As you can see here, the salaries for a senior airman E4 with four years of service, a Hillsborough County public school teacher with 10 years of service, and a Hillsborough County sheriff deputy, they're all significantly below that, even the 100% AMI. And I guess I would stress that those in service sector jobs, they make, they make even less. And so, you know, I guess, we all depend on these military and civil servants and many others in the services industries for our, our safety, well-being, and day-to-day needs. And so, you know, as we've outlined for you this evening, many of these citizens just simply can't afford to buy or rent single-family residences. And we're trying to do an effort here to bring a housing choice that can help to solve that. Should we be successful with our rezoning and our comp plan amendment this evening? You know, it is our intention to further explore development partnerships and project sponsorships with private, with private property, our private parties and third parties. And that includes, that includes the county, Hillsborough County. We want to come back and see if we can do that like the county's done with some other projects in South County. We also want to work with partners, private and public, to attain state and local grants. And then finally, we want to explore kind of our vision with McDill Air Force Base leaders and some of the others in the public servant interest groups.
Thank you, sir.
Yep, thank you.
Appreciate your presentation. We'll go into oral argument for parties of record. Proponent testimony, is there anyone here in support of the application? Opponent testimony, I know there's one individual that's signed up. Those in opposition, Mr. Harwell?
Good evening, Buddy Harwell again, President Concerned Citizens of Gibsonton. Once again, we ask that you deny their request. We would like for it to stay at option A. And let's go back a few years, March 2020, before COVID hit the fan. We did have a meeting with Mike Corner, and he came out and gave us the options and stuff. And we gave him, you know, what we'd like to see and stuff like that. And then, of course, COVID came. It screwed up the whole county center as far as hearing stuff and what that, and we it was hard to keep track of what was what. So we didn't come down here to those meetings. We didn't make it. We didn't see it. So we wasn't able to talk about it to hopefully change it then. But it is what it is. So we're going from there. Just wanted to point out a couple of things. They were showing the income like at $89,000. That's with probably the, can you see that?
Excuse me, Mr. Harwell, did you show those?
Yes, ma'am.
The CH? Thank you.
That's, the $89,000 is going to be an inflated number because since, you can see, year 2000, there was 8,000 people in Gibsonton. 2019, now there's 20,000. And with, there at least has to be 3,000 to 4,000 new homes, a lot of them off Sims Road with the higher income. We still, Gibsonton is blighted. It's poverty. I mean, if you've been through there lately, I've been since Commissioner Merman's here, I've been after y'all to get sewer in the area. Finally, you know, we are, it looks like. I've been a proponent of that. That is going to help change Gibsonton. We need commercial. We don't have a grocery store. We used to have two grocery stores. We used to have five restaurants. And I've even showed Commissioner Camp a piece of property, commercial property I own. The septic tank is 50 feet from Tampa Bay. This last storm, it was a foot underwater. So the sewer will bring Gibson, make Gip Town great again, like our hat say. Some of the stuff, this is on our SWOT community profile. Natural resources, you can see 28 people are to strength. The county rural small town. Infrastructure is opportunities that we need. Threats, drugs, crimes, of course, roads, traffic, overcrowding. Weaknesses, roads, traffic, lack of retail and groceries. Another one here, local small businesses, RSB zoning, if y'all familiar with the RSB zoning, that's a big zoning in Gibsonton so we can keep the animals, the rides and everything else and work on them in off-season. We have problems with the new developments coming next to some of these and complaining about the rides and repairing them, the animal smells, you know, it's just like moving out to RP2. You know, you move next to a cow field, you're going to smell crap. Lack of hometown atmosphere, the infrastructure as far as threats. Weaknesses, again, roads, poor planning. So I'll be the first one to be here. If we got real affordable housing, $300,000 ain't affordable housing, real affordable housing. Let's see, 150,000, two-bedroom, one-bath apartment, something like that. I'm for rebuilding Gibsonton to get it back on the map to where we were. Let them wait then and see what happens with the sewer system and then come back then. I don't know why they haven't been able to sell it, you know, as far as price range, whatever. It is, like I say, Sims Road is a cluster mess. If anybody's driven down it, from 41 to 301, it's probably two miles, and it would take you 45 minutes in the afternoons. I'm a proponent for commercial, always. We need more commercial. Commercial, the hours are stretched throughout the day. 200 more apartments, it's going to be another, what, 2,000 cars in the morning, 2,000 cars in the evening, when we already are bumper to bumper. So please, deny. Let us get a hold of ourselves. Let us, we'll help you dig you out of this mess that previous boards have created. And we're here to help you in any way we can. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. This time, the applicant has a five-minute rebuttal.
Commissioners, William Malloy again. Just some quick remarks. As to the traffic situation, I rest on our prior testimony in the previous hearing and as Mr. Yates testified- And as Mr. Yates testified, the apartments actually generate less traffic than the commercial option would. That's less of an impact. Commissioners, you've heard some hard testimony from your own staff and concerned citizens about this project. And I want to stress that this isn't something that necessarily belongs just anywhere in Gibsonton or anywhere in Hillsborough County, Ruskin, Keystone. This is in the heart of the urban service area. And this site, even though it is in Gibsonton, has a rare, I call it a confluence of circumstances where we have the available land in the urban service area. We have the utilities. We have proximity to schools. We have walkability to the Walmart, to the commercial node, to Gibsonton. And we have the potential for public transportation. That roundabout that's been funded and is under construction, Betsy and Jim have on their own dime offered to build a bus pad there. Hart is interested in that. They're interested in a test run down East Bay from Gibsonton to Sims. Based on all that, this is an opportunity to really make a dent in our housing crisis, to provide an option for folks that don't want to necessarily live in parish or rent a mobile home on half an acre on well and septic. This is an opportunity that in my professional and my personal opinion, because I do care about this case, I wouldn't have stuck around for two years otherwise, that we can't afford to miss. This is too good for Gibsonton. It's too much of an opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Planning Commission.
Gillian Massey, Planning Commission staff. I'll be presenting on behalf of Carl Janos. The subject site is located in the residential six and residential nine future land use categories. As you know, it's pending residential 20 with HCCPA 22-18. It's located in the urban service area and within the limits of the Gibsonton Community Plan and South Shore Area Wide Systems Plan. The property is pending residential 20 comprehensive plan map amendment, would allow consideration of development at a density of 20 dwelling units per gross acre or a 0.75 floor area ratio, which is a higher density and intensity than is readily seen in the area. As you've already heard, there are three development options being proposed with the third being the most recent, including a number of different density bonuses being proposed. Planning Commission staff and the Planning Commission each found the plan amendment inconsistent with the comprehensive plan based on significant compatibility concerns with such drastic increase in potential density and intensity on the site. Even if a residential 20 future land use were to be approved, it's not a guarantee that adverse impacts could be mitigated through site planning. The major modification is also inconsistent with future land use element objective 16 and some of the associated policies relating to community development. The request does not protect existing neighborhoods as none of the residential developments within a half mile of the site exceeds six dwelling units per acre. This makes the request incompatible with the surrounding densities. The applicant's narrative from October 24th of last year indicates that there's no town homes, apartments, or other alternative housing choices beyond single-family and mobile homes in Gibsonton. Planning Commission staff agrees with this and does not recognize the need for alternative housing options in this area. However, the appropriate transition of density and compatibility is also a major component and weighs heavily in the analysis of the consistency of this rezoning. The applicant has revised their building height from 75 to 45 feet, and Planning Commission staff does acknowledge some of the changes that have been made to the site plan to attempt to mitigate for adverse impacts. However, it's, there's still concerns about a gradual transition in intensities between uses. Furthermore, the modification is inconsistent with a number of goals and strategies within the Gibsonton Community Plan and the South Shore Area Wide Systems Plan. And based on these considerations, Planning Commission staff finds that the proposed major modification is not compatible with the surrounding area. It would encourage residential development at a higher density that's not found in this area or complements the surrounding character within the limits of this community planning area, and finds that it's inconsistent with the Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Zoning Hearing Master.
The zoning Hearing Master considered the applicant's request for a major modification to existing plan development 2287 to allow for a third development option, as has already been explained in detail. The zoning Hearing Master did note that the applicant has applied for a comprehensive plan amendment to the future land use map CPA 2218, which if approved, would change the subject property's future land use designation to residential 20, which is a predicate for this request for a major modification. Future land use amendment 2218 is being heard this evening for the board's consideration. The zoning Hearing Master noted that the applicant stated personal factual knowledge about the lack of housing options in the Gibsonton community and particularly described the lack of apartment units. The zoning Hearing Master stated that the applicant submitted competent substantial evidence in the testimony of its planning expert, who opined that the maximum building height of 45 feet and location of certain site elements and building setbacks address compatibility concerns with options B and option C, and that the proposed development is consistent with a number of specific plan provisions related to future land use and housing. The zoning Hearing Master noted that Development Services Department staff has found the proposed maximum 45-foot building height to be compatible with the surrounding development pattern, and that the applicant did not seek relief from LDC buffering, screening, and setback requirements. The zoning Hearing Master noted that staff found the proposed development supportable with conditions. The zoning Hearing Master concluded with a recommendation of approval of this major modification.
All right, thank you. We'll first consider the comprehensive plan amendment. What's the pleasure of the board? Commissioner Wollstel.
I just wanted to point out a couple of things that were said that I feel like deserve correction quickly. I'm very sensitive, and I appreciate the speaker's service, but I'm very sensitive to the veteran card and when that's said, and I always like to make sure that that's factual. So, when an enlisted person or even a commissioned officer moves off base, they immediately get something called basic allowance for housing, which is a non-taxable income, which is not included in that $37,000. And that amount is almost $2,000 a month, even for an E4 with no dependents, almost $2,400 a month for an E4 with dependents for all 12 months, non-taxable. So, that's significant considering that the average, the average apartment rental rate in the city of Tampa itself is somewhere around $1,700 a month. So, I want to make that clear. And on top of that, we would also get the moment we move off base, BAS, which is a basic allowance for sustenance for food, which is in the city of Tampa, for an enlisted person, about $450 a month, so another about $4,900 a month, plus the $2,000 or so a month for BHS, plus that amount that was shown. So, I just want to, I know that you all support veterans, and I want to make sure that this is not like a situation where it's like a veteran hotspot for an E4 way out there. That'd be actually a pretty inconvenient trip all the way down to McDill. It takes oftentimes 30 minutes just to get on through the gate of that base. So, I wanted to point that out. Can, right now, they are, option A and B is approved, right?
Yes, they have two options, one and two, but yes.
Okay. But the townhouses are an alternate form of housing compared to the character of the current community, correct? Because it's mobile homes and single-family. So, this would be an alternate form of a townhouse which has homeownership that would be a more affordable housing option. There's many different types of developers. Some are high-end, some are lower-end on the market scale. So, this could be an alternative form of affordable housing that offered homeownership compared to the surrounding character of the community. Is that correct?
It certainly could be homeownership, yes.
Okay. Mr. Harwell, I can't make them build businesses. I know that's what you want. And I did want to give fair to you. I think when Mr. Harwell, that what he said was misrepresented, when he was saying 7,500 people are leaving for jobs, what you were saying is that this could be a more of a job nexus to where it keeps people from having to traverse in and out of the area. And I think that that's what you meant. I got a head nod there. I just wanted to give you a chance to clear that up. When was this rezone to rez six and rez nine done? Because I'm assuming it was agriculture. And this is a, and while you're, I'll get, I'll say my point when you're getting there. We've dealt with this several times. It continues to be a frustration for me, is there will be a past board from a long time ago that approved an increase to the density, which was already a change of the character of the community slightly, a gradual change, which is our plan. And the Planning Commission, I mean, you guys thought we would never get in line, but here we are today. I think you guys knocked it out of the park. And now, so do you know how long ago it was?
Well, Commissioner, the existing zoning was approved in 2020. When the rez nine and rez six future land use categories came in, I think it would have been there for some time.
And then, we get another big jump bite at the apple. I think that there, I appreciate the attempt of an investment in the community, but there are a lot of options there. There are alternative forms of housing that would be an increase to the type of housing and character of the community that are already approved. This is just a significant leap, so I'll wait and hear the rest of the opinions there.
Commissioner Owen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I do want to thank the applicant for the presentations. They did a great job on it. And there's no commissioner up here on this board that knows this community better than I do, grown up in the area. And it's a special place. It's a very unique place. And I think a lot of what the Planning Commission said about the gradual transition with the intensity is something to really focus on, on what we're introducing into this community. And I can tell you even from being a real estate attorney, the realty around this area is very unique. They show residential in those particular areas. When those properties go for sale, you have carnival folks from all over the country that come down and descend to purchase this property. Very, very unique. So, when you're introducing a new type of property into an area that has extremely unique zoning, you really do have to take a look at what you're doing. And I, and as far as the affordability component goes, we've got to remember that affordable housing is not just apartments. Mobile homes are a form of affordable housing in some way. They do provide folks, especially here in the Gibsonton area, that have lived there for many, many generations. They do provide an affordable component. And I just don't think that this community in this area is ready for this type of intensity. And I certainly don't want to be the commissioner that is responsible for introducing it. So, while I do understand the position of the property owner and appreciate it, you know, I'm just not there. And as to public transportation and those things, I can tell you, Hart is a long, long way away from providing transportation to those areas. We've got places in Tampa that have to be fixed first. So, this is just an extremely tough one for me to get there, especially when the folks of South County and Gibsonton, I know, are just not ready for this type of high rez and high intensity. So, I'm not going to be there on it, while I do appreciate the applicant's position on it. Thank you.
Commissioner Myers.
Thank you. Last year, when I had my town hall in Gibsonton, they made it real clear that the goal was to bring retail into the Gibsonton area. So, I will not be supporting this tonight.
Commissioner Cohen.
So, what I'm wondering, just after listening to the discussion, is there's three options that we're being presented with, correct? The existing option, the townhouse-only option, and the apartment option, right? A, B, and C? So, you know, it sounds like option C might be a little bit too far of a leap for everybody to go. But I wonder if option, if leaving open option B is not a bad idea because it, you know, if you want commercial, it's going to take more residences. And certainly, you know, while there's been a lot of concern expressed about something as enormous as 199-unit apartment facility, the townhouses might be more compatible with the mobile homes and other single-family that's there. It could get you a little bit more density, but not, not sort of the whole way. And also, you know, I would remind everybody that we're not starting from scratch here. There is already a fairly intense use that would be allowed. So, I'm just suggesting that perhaps we might be able to do one, A and B, but not C, which I think would go a long way to assuaging some of the concerns that were expressed by the community.
Commissioner Kemp.
And are we, are we looking tonight, if I could get a clarification, just about that? Like, in terms of the future land use right now is six and nine, right? Two different properties, six and nine?
Yes, that's correct.
So, so just, in order to accommodate A, there's no change in the future land use? In order to accommodate B, is there a change?
Yes, the B is predicated on the future land use map being changed, the number of units that they're asking for. So...
So, there's no, I mean, I just, I'm trying to clarify, is there truly like an option A, B, and C? Or is it, so the rez, it's just rez 20 for future land use for the whole thing? And then, and then they can decide which of the options, B or C, that they want to build? Or when we do then, the zoning, do we dictate B or C? I'm just trying to understand how this goes.
Well, yes, Commissioner, and I think I may have mixed these a little bit in this discussion, that the future land use map change to rez 20 is necessary for the new options B, amended option B, and new option C. Without that, and the support is predicated on the future land use map change being approved. Without that change, those options B, new option B, amended option B and new option C, would be inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. So, in terms of the future land use map amendment, there's really only one option, is whether it's changing the map or not. And then, if that were changed, if the map was not approved, the zoning would not be consistent with the comprehensive plan. If the zoning, if the map change were approved, that's when those options would be opened up. And what's been presented to you is the package of A, B, and C. And I understand the point about trying to parse them out.
Is it possible, I mean... Is it possible in the zoning portion to even do that?
It is possible to, I mean, remove one of the options. I think we'd want to hear from the applicant before we'd make the, you know, approve part of what their request would be. But yeah, those are all separable options, but it does need the future land use map to be approved before any of them could be considered.
Except it would, wouldn't there be entitlements then, once we did future land use, there's entitlements to whatever in terms of the rezoning?
There would be the potential for somebody to come back and ask for a future modification to their zoning to allow for apartments. They're the only way, I mean, they're allowed townhomes today, as I understand it, under their zoning, under option B. It's just a lesser number of units than they would under the residential 20.
Is that where, how many townhomes? Is that where the, how many townhomes is under the, what they have now?
64 currently.
And then, I mean, I wondered about this with intensity, and I certainly, although I don't really hear so much support for that usually here, the mixed use, which I think is really important. But, you know, I always bemoan that we have these large apartment units coming in with no mixed use in areas like this. I really, I do think it's an area that could support some more intensity in terms of where it is and the infrastructure that we're putting in there with the roundabout, with the sewer and wastewater. I do agree that it'd be a while for Hart, but I don't see, I mean, I mean, Commissioner Owen, you haven't been supporting, you know, having that expansion happen, and that's one of the reasons why I don't think there would be Hart being there. But I do think it is a place that Hart should be myself. And I do think that the roundabout is a significant public investment in infrastructure, and the sewer and wastewater is a very significant investment. And there does seem to be some reasons there for having, you know, a different kind of opportunity and a choice about where to live. So, I guess I'm wondering, in the future land use... So I guess I'm wondering, in the future land use, if, you know, and I'm not sure about continuing it, if there could be something less intense that's requested in the future land use, for instance, rez 12 or something like that? Or again, neighborhood mixed use would do, I guess, as a category, if it were there, might do some of, provide some of the same possibility in terms of doing the business that people are asking for, as well as providing, you know, places for people to live. And I think we all know that there are, and I appreciate the clarification that she gave Commissioner Winstall on the salaries, but there are a lot of McDill staff that live in Gibsonton and live in other areas right around there, thousands, not just in Fishhawk, but in, you know, because I've seen the census tracts and everything for people working at the base, both as consultants and as staff. So, you know, I do think that and the other things that were brought up by the applicant are things to be thought about. Would, I guess, you know, I'd like to see if the applicant, I don't know if that's a decision to be made now, or if we could continue this about, you know, a possible less intense future land use category request? Because I, it doesn't seem like right now there's support for the rez 20. So I'm just, you know, wondering if there's any comment to be had on that now, Mr. Malloy, maybe? Or if, you know, a, you know, a motion to continue, to give some opportunity to reconsider?
Yes, sir.
Is it on?
Yep.
Okay. I'm going to go back to the slide, because I think there's some confusion that I definitely want to clear up as far as what we are, and Billy had a slide here, what we have now and what we're asking for, if the board indulged me to help.
Quickly, though, make sure you answer her question.
Yeah, yes, sir. So we have commercial right now. We are entitled for commercial. We are entitled for townhomes right now. We are looking to keep the commercial the same. Option B, we are increasing the entitlements on the townhomes to, I think it's 110, and we are seeking the multifamily option. We're here pushing the multifamily option because that's where we're being approached by interested parties, both as future residents and also, you know, developers who said, hey, if we can get the zoning in place that, you know, we can get our unit costs down, we can come to a community like Gibsonton. I feel very strongly of going through the process. You know, we, we came in here through the zoning process, even though I know during our whole zoning process, the Live Local Act came out. And so, you know, I made it a point, I said, I want to come through here with the zoning and not go through with the Live Local Act, because, you know, that's something that I think the commissioner should have a say in the process. And so, you know, we're certainly coming in at entitlements way under the Live Local Act. And so, which we, you know, I guess I'm of the opinion of, the need is great. I'm talking to a apartment vest corps, some of you may know vest corps, they've done some of the housing 9% credit programs. They're building an apartment complex, very similar to ours, right in Riverview. They got four times the number of applicants for the units that are there. And so this is definitely a need for the community. Again, we want to come through the zoning process as opposed to other alternatives.
Okay, so is, hold on, Commissioner Kemp. So is that essentially, I think I'm hearing, that's a polite way of saying that you're not a minimal to a continuance to try and come up with a less dense option? Is that fair?
I think we're amenable to that, I guess. What does the commission have in mind as far as less dense? Because, you know, we came up with, I guess I'll show you a slide that I had prepared. I'll do it very quickly, just to kind of show you, you know, what's at stake here. And I guess I call it baking the how many units cake.
I'm sorry, sir, I have to just interrupt for a second to ask if you had shown this previously.
I had not shown this before, so.
Because we're kind of in a mixed process with the zoning and the CPA.
For you to just hang loose and, Commissioner Kemp has the floor. Do you have any additional questions?
Well, I guess I would ask for staff. If, is this eligible for Live Local and what kind of intensity could be gotten there?
So commissioners, we do believe that the existing commercial and office zoning would enable consideration of Live Local. Right now, our, under, under Live Local, the highest density allowed anywhere within the county is 35 units per acre. That is.
Considerably more.
It is.
Mm-hmm. Than what they're asking for now. And so that would be an entitlement that could be exercised in that property?
We wouldn't say that the zoning opens that door for consideration of Live Local by the owner.
Okay. I'm not so sure where to go for it, to understand what you're saying. And I guess there would be just, that the question is, is, so you're entitled, you could be under Live Local entitled to 35, you're asking for 20, and there seems to be some sentiment here not to, I would say, not to do that. And I'm just wondering if there's any possibility of reconsideration for you, given time, maybe not tonight, to do 12 or 16, or something like that?
I think we would be open to that. Again, we came in at 20 because I feel, I've fielded calls from different developers who've said, hey, we can't make the support for less than 200 units. Unfortunately, to do an R-12, certainly, R-16 less so, to do that density and to get 200 units, you need a much bigger footprint of land that just isn't in Gibsonton anymore. And so that's, that's the challenge with that. I'm open to it, but I guess if I'm able to ask the board, is the board open to if, I mean, we're open to explore maybe an R-16, if that's something that the board would be open to consider.
Adam, if this were continued, when would it come back?
So if this would be continued, what I would recommend is just continue it to another round. It would, it would need to go back through another review. It might change the zoning, would certainly need to change. So I don't know that we could be, we could say today, a predictable date to continue it to.
Understood. Okay. Okay, thank you. Commissioner Winstall?
I just, I feel like we've reached an end, and I'm gonna, what is the motion to, do I just move to deny the increase to residential 20? I motion, I move to deny the increase to residential 20.
Second, motion denied by Commissioner Winstall. Second, Commissioner Owen. Commissioner Cameron Spada?
Yes, thank you. That was a great presentation. However, my concerns are the heavy traffic that's already there. It's really concerning to me. And it's already zoned, what it's zoned for right now, if it's built like that, it's going to increase the traffic even more. And so that is really concerning to me for the residents live there, people traveling through there. So that's what I'm concerned about.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Cohen?
You know, I respect where everyone's coming from on this, but I can't support the motion. I feel that the Live Local threat on this puts the neighborhood in much greater danger with the increased density.
Okay, Commissioner Owen.
Yes, I'll be real fast, just on that. I'm someone that, I'm no longer going to be, you know, threatened by it. That's something that they have to take up with Live Local with the legislature. So we as a board cannot just continue to say we're going to cave based on, on an act that's created by the legislature. We have a duty, a job to do here as a body here. So I'm going to be supporting the motion. Thanks.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Please record your vote.
Motion carried by the two commissioners, Cohen and Kemp voted no.
Okay, now we need a motion on the major motto, 220671. We need a motion denied. Motion denied, Commissioner Owen. Second, Commissioner Winstall, please record your vote.
Motion carried by the two commissioners, Cohen and Kemp voted no.
All right, thank you. Now we'll go to the transmittal hearing for text amendments under the future land use section of the plan. Will Planning Commission introduce the first item?
Yes, thank you. As you stated, this, we're now moving to the transmittal portion of the evening's hearing. The next eight items are all portions of the future land use element update for the comprehensive plan. The horizon date of your current future land use element is 2025, and the Florida state statutes indicate that our comprehensive plan should have a horizon of at least 20 years. That's why there is some urgency to updating the plan and getting it in compliance with state statute. Otherwise, it could hinder us in making other publicly initiated amendments to the comprehensive plan, such as those that were discussed yesterday to expand the urban service area. The planning commission staff has been hard at work for more than a year on this and are bringing, we've heard from a lot of stakeholders, from a lot of different parts of the community. Ms. Linehart will review some of that outreach, but we're bringing forward our best professional recommendation that we believe represents a good step forward in streamlining and proving the future land use section of the comprehensive plan. There will always be room for improvement, and the plan should be an evolving document that changes as the community changes. With that, I'll turn it over.
All right, thank you. Good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Ornita. It's kind of strange being on this side of the dais. Good evening, Melissa Linehart, Planning Commission staff. I'm here tonight to present Goal One for you of the future land use section update, as Ms. Ornita mentioned, of the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan. So our comprehensive plan has not been holistically updated since 2008. State law requires that comprehensive plans have a 20-year horizon, as Ms. Ornita mentioned, and with the horizon date of next year. The current future land use section is not in compliance with that requirement. So tonight, we're here with a reorganized, streamlined future land use section that incorporates some changes and overall addresses our anticipated growth over the next 20 years. So on this, you're seeing the last of the piece of the puzzle with the future land use section. Over the last three or years or so, you've seen all the rest of the other sections come through. Oh, I'm sorry, it's animated. I forgot about that part. That's my problem. My presentation for Goal One is just a little bit longer than the other presentations that you'll see tonight, so don't be scared. I'm going to try to go through this as quickly as possible, but the remaining seven goals will not include the things that I'm going to talk about tonight, like the background information, the outreach that we've conducted, and the reason we're here for the population projections. The other presentations will focus solely on their goal and their consistency finding. So why are we here and what are we anticipating for future growth? By 2045, unincorporated Hillsborough County will see 350,000 more people and 107,000 more jobs. We'll also have an increased demand for transportation, public services, schools, and recreational facilities. With this update and with the briefings that we've presented to you all over the last year or so, we've talked about accommodating inward growth, so inside the urban service area, as well as outward future growth, so that would be outside the urban service area. Speaking of the urban service area, this slide shows the urban service area in the red, and the entire square is Hillsborough County as a total. The, one thing that's unique that I wanted to mention about Hillsborough County as a whole and an unincorporated county, we have choices on where we want to live. So you can choose to live in a more urban area, a suburban area, or you could live in an area that's rural. The urban service area is what identifies urban, suburban, and rural areas throughout the county, allowing us to have these choices. So as we continue to grow, we know we are running out of land that's vacant, land that's developable or redevelopable within the urban service area. There are 49,908 total developable and redevelopable acres within Plant City, Temple Terrace, the city of Tampa, and unincorporated, I'm sorry, and the urban service area of unincorporated county. Of that acreage, 65% is in our urban service area and 35% is in the combined municipal areas. On this map, you'll see the developable acreage in purple and redevelopable acreage in orange. This was actually in our presentation yesterday as well during the regular meeting. These areas exclude the wetlands and other conservation areas, and you can see that most of this land is very small in size and parcelized. There are a few large areas of land left for either development or redevelopment. This slide shows the breakdown of the various categories on the future land use map, broken down by whether they are rural, suburban, or urban in nature. This map shows that unincorporated Hillsborough County is comprised predominantly of future land use categories that are suburban and rural in nature. And as I move forward in my presentation and dig a little bit more into Goal One itself, this may help us remember that while some of what we're talking about encourages more compact and what could be considered urban development, this will be a small subset of, compared to the other future land use categories and breakdowns that are shown on this map. The policies you'll see tonight will not fundamentally be changing that. So this slide talks a little bit about the outreach. It has been pretty extensive for the future land use update. We've had four virtual community meetings. We've had three in-person community meetings, five project advisory team meetings, and those are meetings with folks who really wanted to drill down into more of the policy level. We conducted an online survey and received over 1,800 responses, and the update was also featured in multiple media outlets. A more in-depth review of all the outreach is in each section of our staff reports. So this brings us to the details of Goal One. This is a publicly initiated plan amendment. It's also the first of eight goals of the future land use element. I'm sorry, we're calling it a section, future land use section, and it again is the last major update. Goal One itself reads that it wants, the idea is to maintain a land use pattern that concentrates growth in the urban service area, and it's supported by existing or planned public facilities and services. Goal One includes some modifications to the existed, existing plan language, including the topic of timeliness of growth and development. It also includes the retention of a lot of the policy direction that's currently adopted in the plan today about concentrating growth in the urban service area and overall our strong growth management policies. The newly proposed language contains similar, similar language to what's adopted today, but it elaborates on the appropriateness of the future land use map amendment changes that increase density or in, density or intensity within the urban service area, to a degree that it changes the future land use category from a suburban to an urban category. In these cases, the proposed language says that these plan amendments should consider, or I'm sorry, would be considered premature if there's a lack of programmed or planned urban services, or if there are unaddressed level of, level of service deficiencies for adequate public facilities. It also includes the addition of language that emphasizes the importance of the community plans and making sure we look at that. There was also a modification to the criteria that must be met for publicly and privately initiated plan amendments to the urban service area boundary. This language outlines one of the ways that Goal One may be implemented. These criteria include ensuring what is proposed is adjacent and continuous to the USA boundary, or if not contiguous, unique circumstances need to be demonstrated that warrant the separation, such as the presence of environmental lands. There's also new policy language that explains the presence of suburban or urban future land use categories in a rural area that maybe recognizes an existing development pattern, does not mean that Hillsborough County will be providing central water and sewer service to those areas, and that water and sewer service provisions are outlined in the One Water section of the comprehensive plan. And that brings us to our biggest change under Goal One, which is the introduction of expansion areas to accommodate future growth and, I'm sorry, future population and job growth. These are areas that are currently in the rural area, but will transition to more of a suburban or urban development pattern over the horizon of the comprehensive plan, which would look out to 2045. As we have said in our outreach over the last year or so, and the public meetings that many of you have been a part of about the future land use update, if we do not plan for it, it will happen in an unplanned way. This language speaks to specifically about the growth that should occur in an efficient manner while addressing infrastructure demands, housing, job needs, natural and rural preservation, and also quality of life. This urban expansion area policy would require a publicly initiated amendment, and that an expansion area would also require, would be, a plan would be required. This is like a larger area plan that would look at the various uses and where they would go. So where would housing go? Where would jobs go? Where would goods and services go? I also wanted to mention that the word urban in urban expansion areas that you'll see in your draft language. urban in urban expansion areas that you'll see in your draft language, it does not automatically translate to an urban development pattern. The word urban in this case refers to the provision of urban services, like central water and sewer. So, this is similar to the way we use the word urban in the term urban service area, which does not assume that all future land use categories are urban in nature. In order to make that clear in the proposed language of Goal One, Planning Commission staff would suggest perhaps simplifying the term to expansion area or service expansion area. And that brings us to agency comments. Throughout the update process, we did have multiple meetings with various working groups with the intention of hearing feedback by topic area. These included several agencies with the county, like Development Services, the County Attorney's Office, Conservation and Environmental Lands Management, Economic Development, and Community and Infrastructure. We also met with other important groups like the airport and the port. We've gone through multiple drafts, which were shared with these important stakeholders along the way. We've made some changes throughout the outreach process, and with the last draft, we specifically created a response sheet that is located in your backup. Many changes that were made with that input from external agencies, and no formal objections were received. And that brings us to the consistency finding. Goal One is consistent with several policies of the future land use element today. In addition to the major changes listed on the previous slide, the section updates and retains important components of the existing and adopted language and is consistent with those components. This includes proactively directing growth into the urban service area, as well as guiding growth into areas that can accommodate growth, growth with public infrastructure and services. And those proposed changes were also consistent with policy language regarding growth, public utilities, and coordination with other jurisdictions, and those policies are outlined in the One Water chapter, intergovernmental coordination section, and the capital improvement section of the comprehensive plan. So, with that, the Planning Commission found this text amendment, HCCPA 23-21, consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the unincorporated Hillsborough Comprehensive Plan. I'm here for any questions that you may have.
All right, thank you. This is a public hearing. Two individuals have signed up. David Coleman, Mr. Coleman here. Regina Hernandez, okay, Mr. Coleman is here. Come on down, sir. Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Dave Coleman. That was a heck of a warm-up band before we got to the flu presentation. It's wonderful to be here. I've listened to the presentation in their room some time ago, part of the presentation, because it's huge, and it's an awful lot for me to wrap my head around, but it's, there was one thing that really stood out to me, and it was just one sentence, and it was in the B categories. That's why I signed up for the three of them, because not knowing which one it was going to be talked about here. Your way or the highway, pun intended, at a planning commission meeting for this meeting, one bullet point that really stood out was maintain the commitment to the urban core. This relates to each of the eight presentations. That's my opinion, especially as these very topics were brought up at the regular BOCC meeting yesterday. I can have extreme prejudice in my views and outreach. Board members are bound, I would think, unless morally bankrupt, to try and represent all of the county. Yesterday, we heard that, in that, we heard that this in, this is a republic, not a democracy, that there are to be no funds for transit or roads in the core, only in East and South County, that a bill will live or die in East County. We heard that schools were going charter, so no need for public school funding. We heard that the urban service line is a myth. I'd like to point out all the lines on all the maps that you've been seeing and will be seeing. In the past, we heard, and there was just a recent, just an explanation of what urban means. In the past, we heard not, not one dime for housing until roads are built in South County. Will I keep reminding you about 233 dead on our Hillsborough streets, about 7,000 hit and runs, about 4,000 kids in our school with no permanent address, about the missing middle that can't afford to rent where they were raised? The city and unincorporated county north and west have needs. No future plan is complete without regarding their needs. I hear East County is God's country. Keep it that way and change zoning codes. Declare vast tracts of land-water reclamation areas and stop expansion. And I wrote this before I heard what your constituents are here to tell you. They don't want what you're saying that you want out there. Leave it God's country. That's what they're saying to you, right? It's the way you voted today, but that's not the way you were sounding yesterday. I don't get it. Anyway. That one bullet point, maintain a commitment to the urban core, something your predecessors have always done. And that's about it for me. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Regina Hernandez?
Good evening. My name's Regina Hernandez. I live at 8703 Lake Comm Lane in Odessa, Florida. I was privy to be on some of your, the planning, Hillsborough County Plannings websites. I was able to watch some of them and participate. My concern is that there's a broad stroke here, and that you need to pump the brakes and go out and visit these areas that you plan on changing the zoning. I know there's growth. We all know there's growth coming, but I do think it's important that we just pump the brakes and look intimately at these locations that you plan on changing from rural to other zones. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And I think that's all the speakers we had. One more? Okay. Good evening.
Good evening. Kami Corbett with the Law Firm of Hillward and Henderson. And I just wanted to thank staff for their hard work on this particular element. We spent a lot of time with stakeholders, the Builders Association, commercial real estate organizations, citizens, and I think Melissa said it best, although this may not be everyone's ideal cup of tea for what the element should look like, but I do think it is a good balance of all of the stakeholders, and I would urge you to transmit it. This particular amendment doesn't make any changes to any maps. It just sets the framework to allow you to study them, and so would respectfully request you to move forward this evening.
Thank you for your comments. Are any other speakers on to this? Okay, seeing none, we'll go into board discussion. Is there any discussion?
Is this only for Goal One?
We're going to go.
We're going to do this.
We're going to go through each goal. So, so now we're in board discussion as to Goal One. So, I would need a motion for transmittal on each one of them.
This quarter mile, though, is, is Goal One, right? This public water and sewer service exists within a quarter mile of the site. I think it's under Policy 2.2.
Ms. Linehart, if you want to address.
I'm just making sure that I'm talking about, yes, it's under Goal One growth. It is down there. It's under 2.2. I, I don't, I still don't understand the quarter mile. It's kind of a hard and fast rule. It seems, you know, if Michael Jordan came in and the GOAT bought a house a third of a mile out, and he's like, you know what? I'm building my own basketball court, and I'm going to have water needs. You know, are we going to tell him, so sorry, just a couple feet more, and you, you could have got the water? Just the, the quarter mile thing, it just, it seems like too weird of a hard line. If someone's willing to absorb the cost, which this says that directly, that, that the expansion of the urban service area would include full cost recovery to the county for the services needed by the new development. It doesn't seem like the quarter mile rule should be there. If we're saying already, hey, you've got to pay for everything, the expansion of the line, the service of the line, the flushing of the line, if, if that's what it takes. So, that one line, I just, I don't know if someone's got an opinion about it, but it just has stuck with me as a problem.
I see Planning Commission in the queue. I'm, I'll go to, go ahead.
I can respond to that if, if I may. I believe that what you're looking at in, in Policy 2.2 is the existing policy that's adopted today. That policy is proposed to be changed to Policy 1.1.9, which shows up on page 19 of the PDF. We actually removed both of the, the provisions that you spoke about. We've removed the quarter mile, and we removed the, the thing about the financial, the full cost recovery. We changed that to a provision about, it's bullet, it's now part of bullet point number four, that talks about ensuring that development has, contributes adequately to the costs associated with the necessary infrastructure and services, and it has more language than that. But, yeah, we did make some changes there.
Okay, yeah. So, the layout is confusing me.
Yes.
So, that is now removed from there, then?
Yes, yes.
Cool.
The, the proposed language starts with page, I think it's 16 of the PDF, and then that policy, it's, it's all renumbered, so that makes it a little extra confusing, but is now 1.1.9.
Okay, okay, perfect. Okay, that's why it confused me that I saw that it was on there. Good.
All right, okay. Thank you. Commissioner Myers?
Move for approval.
Okay, got a motion by, to transmit by Commissioner Myers, second by Commissioner Cameron Cepeda. No other discussion. Please record your votes.
Motion carried six to zero.
Okay, great. We'll move on to B2, Planning.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Katrina Corcoran, Planning Commission staff. I'm here tonight to present the future land use section update, Goal Two, on growth management. Starting off, I'd like to read that goal. It says to ensure that the character compatibility and location of land uses optimize the combined potential for economic benefit, fiscal sustainability, protection of natural resources, and maintaining viable agriculture. Ensure density and intensities are maintained through the future land use map. The proposed changes for Goal Two on growth management include a future land use categories table. No major changes to the categories themselves as a part of this table. This section was previously an appendix at the back of the plan. So, having this summary near the start allows easier viewing of the category, intent, typical uses, maximum density, and maximum floor area ratio. We also have a new bonus structure called Centers and Connections, or CNC. The intent is to streamline the comprehensive plan amendment process by allowing density and intensity bonuses within certain areas of unincorporated Hillsborough County, directing growth to areas where it's desired and maintainable within the urban service area. Again, these areas are called Centers and Connections, and they're identified on an associated map, which will be adopted within the policy language. The methodology for that map and the map itself are in my next couple of slides. This is an incentive-based bonus structure, so it's not required for anyone to do it, but if they do opt in, there are design provisions for development as a part of that structure. And another proposed change is the update to the Transfer of Development Rights, or TDR, language. This is for the pilot program and receiving areas, so making them implementable, and it guides companion land development code amendments that are forthcoming. The policy language outlines that receiving areas include YMAMA and CNC locations, and it establishes the pilot program for 20 years and includes general language on TDR monitoring, reporting, and community outreach. Another proposed change is new language to increase the opportunity to develop congregate living facilities, or CLFs. This is based on board direction. It more clearly defines where CLFs can be considered within certain future land use categories and how their density and intensity will be determined. They are still allowed in every residential, commercial, and industrial flu category, and now allowed for consideration in the public slash quasi-public category, and they may utilize either a density conversion rate or floor area ratio, or FAR. Taking a step back to that Centers and Connections bonus structure that I mentioned, this is the map methodology. It shows that the connections are on roads that either have an adopted roadway context classification that supports more walkability, or they have future land use categories that already support the potential for higher density. Quarters within the coastal high hazard area are excluded, and there's a potential for density bonuses along these corridors. The centers include major intersections and areas identified in community plans for redevelopment or walkability. And again, the centers in the coastal high hazard area are excluded. There's a potential for intensity and density bonuses within these centers. I know it might be a little bit small, but this is the Centers and Connections map. You can see here, the legend is blown up a little bit. The navy lines are the connections. They are surrounded by an eighth of a mile buffer along those. That's the pink. And the centers are the light blue circles. So, that is a quarter mile on the centers. And I did want to note that we revised this map based on elected and appointed official feedback, stakeholder input, public input throughout this process. So, this map has been, has evolved throughout this process based on feedback. Further proposed changes for Goal Two on growth management include simplifying language for sections on minimum density and calculation of density and intensity. Did want to note, there were minor clarifying changes made since the packets were sent to you all. Those were provided in your backup this evening. Given Planning Commission discussion and motion, this section also reverts to existing policy language for incentives for mixed use, so that is existing with just clarifying edits, as well as clarifying edits to existing policy language on the upland forest density and intensity bonus, and the environmentally sensitive land density calculation. As Melissa mentioned earlier, we did receive comments for each goal, and multiple language changes were made. Other comments that we did not make were addressed, and were addressed in staff responses and are available on your backup. There were no formal objections for Goal Two on growth management. For the consistency review, this section updates and retains important components of the existing language and is consistent with these components. This includes timing and location of growth for development in a feasible manner through components such as Centers and Connections, TDRs, and other clarified bonus structures, looking at the existing timing of growth policies, Objective Two and the associated policy here. These bonus structures direct growth inside the urban service area into areas with existing infrastructure, again referencing tools for implementation, Objective Three in the associated policy, as well as growth management strategy and land use allocation, Objective Five in the associated policy. For the recommendation, the Planning Commission found proposed text amendment, HCCPA 2322, consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan. This concludes my presentation. I'm happy to take any questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Each speaker will get three minutes. We've got three speakers signed up. We'll start with David Coleman. Okay. Regina Hernandez? All right. Gordon Schiff. Good evening, Mr. Schiff.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Gordon Schiff, 4155 West Cypress Street, Tampa, Florida, 33607. I'm just here supportive of the Planning Commission staff's efforts. They worked with the community, and they do deserve compliments, and I, and I'm here supportive of the recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. We'll go into board discussion unless there's anybody else. Commissioner Wustel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to make sure, is this where we should be? Because I'm in alignment with you about the conversation we had yesterday about RES 9. Now, on these growth management goals, is this where we should be categorizing in these tables about what we're considering suburban, urban? Is this where we should try and make an attempt to fix that in our growth management goals going forward?
That's a good question.
Sure.
Melissa?
Yeah. You're correct that as part of Goal Two, in the table that starts on page 12 of the packet, it does lay out the land use categories and categorizes them by rural, semi-rural, suburban, urban. RES 9 is under the suburban section. If you would like to move that to the urban section, you could make that as part of your motion.
Okay.
Yeah, just for your reference. I mean, we, we all know, I mean, it's fine if the bonuses exist, but we all know that RES 9 almost automatically means RES 12 apartments. I mean, that's just what we've dealt with. It's a reality we face. So, however you want to craft, if you're, I know that that was your important to you yesterday, and I do support it. I think that it's a challenge. You know, Commissioner Myers, we, we just fought, and we had an RM 35 that was being told no in an area that you and I had made it, I mean, it made absolute sense to be where it should have been in the university area. And I think this is how we can address and, like, I want to make sure that when those, if they don't have a champion, Commissioner Myers, in the future, but that there should be a, an RM 35 or whatever there, are we cleaning that up? And I don't remember the exact issues. A lot of language was being thrown around about why it wasn't supposed to be there, but if the, if we feel like collectively as growth management, that we feel like R9 is in reality going to be R12 apartments, and that should be considered urban, and that's how we suck. that's how we suck in more density for, to grow public transportation realistically? We suck in more density to the urban area. Should we be doing it right here? So.
Very good points. Melissa, you look like you want to speak, so.
Sure. I'll try to answer that. I think the Centers and Connections bonus is explicitly trying to target those areas, like the university area, Palm River, areas where there, it is more appropriate to have the increased density. I believe the zoning that you're referring to had an issue with applying the flex and a density bonus, and we did not make any changes related to the comprehensive plan addressing, in this section addressing that.
Yeah, and I would just, if you do that, I would support it. I know you'd have to pass the gavel. Just speaking not for God's country, but I'll speak closer to, you know, I have been, I heard a speaker recommend we go to all of the areas, trust me, from Keystone, that's where I'm at, all the way down to Fort Lonesome, up to Thonona Sasa. I've traveled it all. I'm familiar with all the areas. And the Citrus Park Mall area is going to, it's an, that's going, that's an odd area that has a lot of potential future odd growth challenges, and it has big globs of bubbles all over it. It's packed with single-family homes, and if we start talking about res nine in those bubbles, and what that might do, is Citrus Park going to just become a nightmare of apartments, if Citrus Park Mall, whatever, may or may not happen with that. We saw the Big Cat Rescue came on the news. They moved their operations. I don't know what their land zoning is. So I just want to be careful now is our opportunity, so.
Commissioner Kemp.
And just in speaking to that, I'll still say that there's plenty of more than res nine in suburban areas, as we all know, all over Brandon. There is, you know, and I consider those all suburban areas, and it's kind of like mapped that way, too. I mean, all over the country in suburban areas, there's low-density apartments. That's what garden apartments are. That's what, you know, townhomes, that's, I mean, it exists everywhere. So I'm just going to mention that. But what I actually wanted to talk about is, and this has to do with the whole flex. I want to mention one further reform, but that I believe we should pursue this year. I was going to bring it up in future items to work on, not tonight. I'll go with what we have tonight. But I already told Ms. Zornita about this, Ms. Leinhardt about this, and I understand that it's not part of the package tonight, but I'm speaking of the flex. It's under the Future Land Use Plan Now, that is 7.3 and 7.4, and it's currently part of goal two here. It remains the same, 2.2, 2.3, and 2.2, 2.4, in tonight's proposal. And the flex came out of a privately initiated comprehensive plan amendment many, many years ago. The flex allows land use categories to extend beyond established boundaries. So if somebody has a nine, they can extend it over another contiguous part to a nine under certain rules. It seems like it's almost a default if that's what they want. The, so the flex allows land use categories to extend beyond established boundaries. The flex can have some surprising, and even, I think, alarming results, and I believe it would be wiser to consider, to consider eliminating the flex. At the very least, we could bring, we could further reform it. And so I'll bring this up again as a future item at the next board meeting. I want you to know, but I support what we have here tonight.
Yeah, and I think those are interesting ideas, Commissioner Kemp. And is anyone else in, I don't see anyone else in the queue, but definitely that's for discussion on a future item for sure. And I'd like to comment on the examples you used, Commissioner Kemp, are prime examples, I think, for the opposite argument. Brandon, nobody knows Brandon better than me. To me, Brandon is the urban core. You can just drive down Highway 60, down Lumston, up through Falkenburg. It's why I say it's a place, Commissioner Myers, we share this district now. It's a place where it's completely appropriate to bring in affordable housing and high-res apartments. It's actually a good example of bad planning. As you know, Commissioner Kemp, the overlay into Brandon came with Rhonda Storms, came way too late over there. And so, so it's just something we just disagree on. I think that res nine and, which can turn into apartments, is the prime example of what urban lifestyle is. It is not suburban. So, you know, I would like to entertain that. Now, Melissa, I, you know, obviously I'll have to pass the gavel here in a minute if I make a motion. I could basically move to transmit with one change to move res nine into urban, correct?
Yes.
And then we would take a vote on that, obviously, and whether it passes or not, then we'd come back. So.
Yes.
I'm going to pass the gavel, and I'm going to move to transmit, supplementing and making the change of the res nine, moving that into the urban category.
No, nobody's in the queue, so, okay.
I have a question.
Okay.
My question is this. So if you move it to, and I wouldn't have thought you would define Brandon as urban the way you were talking, so, okay, it helps me, because I'm not understanding exactly what you're saying. But the, if you move, what, just curiously, does it make any difference if it's just moved res nine? Any real impact if you change the word that you use for it as suburban or urban? Because at any time, any developer can come in and ask for a future land use change, you know, and then, and then do a, just like tonight. So is there any real thing, if you can just define it that way, but?
In the plan today, for the record, Melissa Leinhardt, Planning Commission staff, we do classify residential nine as urban today. But just with the map that I showed as part of goal one, we thought it would be more appropriate to change that to more of a suburban category, given the fact that the most that you see on the map involves suburban land use categories. But I don't think for the purposes of tonight that there is any, you know, real devastating impact to making that change.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Ollie?
Yeah?
In the queue?
Actually, no, I'll come out.
Okay. So there's no other speakers, so I guess we'll cast a vote.
It's the second?
Yeah, you have to say.
Second.
Yeah.
I wanted to add your change.
Correct. So we're moving to transmit, with me making one change, that the res nine moves into the urban category. Okay.
Motion carried five to one. Commissioner Kemp voted no.
Do you need a point of order?
Yes, because I was saying that we should.
Your mic's on.
Oh, sorry. That we should vote as is, and then let your item motion come up as separate from what we're transmitting now, because that is a separate issue.
No, I don't, I think it was within the body of what we were transmitting, so that's, I moved to transmit, but with that one change. It's with, it's the same goal that we're moving, so. Okay, we'll move on to B3, planning. Evening.
Good evening, this is Erica Larson, Planning Commission staff. This is goal three for the future land use unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan. This goal composes five new objectives. The first proposed change is the combination of the compatibility and community planning sections. Staff is proposing to combine these sections in goal three to highlight the importance of our existing policies and ensuring development is compatible with the unique character of our neighborhoods. Edits include the addition of language and policy on 3.1.1 on limiting commercial mixed use and residential future land use categories, which coincides with existing commercial locational criteria, and goal four, which Jay will mention in his presentation later. The second proposed change is to update and consolidate language pertaining to the economically disadvantaged populations, which was housed in the economically disadvantaged groups element, or EDGE for short. The EDGE element is optional per state statutes for the comprehensive plan, and several other policies have already been incorporated and moved into other sections of the comprehensive plan, such as mobility, recreation, open space, and intergovernmental coordination. So the future land use update for goal three intends to bring over remaining EDGE policies that address topics such as housing, employment, economic development, public health, and land uses. Some of the policies under the proposed objectives, 3.3 and 3.4, were rewritten to update terminology for the 20-year vision and strengthen the compatibility section of goal three. There is a new objective, 3.3, and policy 3.3.1, and these are added to align land uses and new community facilities, which are close to the economically disadvantaged populations for public transportation. So any policies that are not proposed to be moved over from the EDGE into the future land use section or other sections of the comprehensive plan are proposed for deletion, mainly due to being duplicative with other EDGE or comprehensive plan policies. The final proposed change is the cultural and historical preservation section, which has been updated to reflect current programs and needs. For goal three, there are no formal objections received. However, we did receive agency comments with some requested language changes, and multiple changes were made, as with the other goals. Planning Commission staff have crafted responses to any agency comments not addressed, and those can be found in your backup. The proposed revisions are consistent with the following objectives and policies of the comprehensive plan. Proposed cultural and historical preservation section contain minimal edits and is consistent with existing historic preservation policies. Proposed policies are also considered with several policies in the future land use element listed on the screen before you. The proposed language includes existing adopted policy direction regarding protecting existing neighborhoods from intrusion of incompatible uses, and directing the growth of non-residential and higher-density residential uses along major roadways and intersections. The proposed language is also consistent with the EDGE Economic Development Section, which has language on including employment opportunities for economically disadvantaged populations in a feasible manner through existing programs, incentives, and other collaborative efforts. Based on this, Planning Commission staff recommends the proposed text amendment, HCCPA 2323, to be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan. Thank you. This concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. And this is a public hearing. This is a, my mic's going out. This is a public hearing. Each speaker will be given three minutes. I have one person signed up. Regina Hernandez?
At my line.
Okay, great. So we'll move on to board discussion?
Thank you.
Oh, yes. Come on up. Mr. Coleman.
Thanks, Dave Coleman, again. I signed up for another B1, and maybe it was a different, but thank you for allowing me the time. On this particular issue, the area has very few entry points for people that are really on the fringes and struggling, are elderly or homeless. Even with THHI, which is Tampa-Hillsborough, there aren't very many entry points. I noticed, again, that Catholic Charities, which is right on my street, they put up about 35 units, and it was empty for a year, then it filled up, and now there's only five cars in the parking lot, while right down the street, there were two moms with six kids living in two hotel rooms for the past year. There are some really deep needs, and the county needs to do, my opinion is, and I know that there's a feeling that tax dollars don't go to help other people on the other side of the aisle for me, but they're not capable of keeping up with the need. Not the Tampa Housing Authority with J.L. Young, which has residences for 600 people. But I've been there. I was offered a room. It's a prison cell. It's a cinder block 10 by 15-foot room that, it's concrete floor and a concrete ceiling. Yet, for our veterans, I was at an event where 35 units opened up, which was one, which was two-thirds of their income instead of, it would have been one-third of my income, and the veterans' place was half the income, and it was an absolutely gorgeous three-room suite. So there's a disparity going on, and I don't think that our elders deserve to be treated like they are in J.L. Young. And I constantly refer to the $2.3 billion that we have in that liquid money fund that maintains our AAA rating and purchases ELAP land. There are ways that the county can do more to the topics that were brought up in that B item, and I can't stress it enough that people are hurting really bad. Thanks for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Any other speakers on this? Okay, we'll move on to board discussion. Commissioner Wustel.
Does this, it talked a lot about economically disadvantaged communities. Does this goal, right now we have an affordable housing unit, I think, going up in Lake Seffner. Is it, I think it's Seffner? Those folks now are unfortunately on an island. There will not be realistic transportation there in decades. I think that that's a reasonable assumption. Job growth in that area, it's a suburban area. Does this encapsulate bringing those affordable needs close to the urban core? The actual urban core, not Centers and Connections, which I appreciate is thoughtful because it's trying to drive a nexus in certain areas, but the actual urban core that exists, which is the only place that will realistically get public transportation for, within a reasonable period of time, does this draw it up into those areas?
It's for you.
Thanks. So in this section, there, it talks more broadly about housing opportunities targeted for economically disadvantaged populations, being located near employment centers, transportation, and other community facilities. There are probably more specific policies in the housing element of the comprehensive plan that speak to directing affordable housing to places where there is transportation options to serve them. So I don't have that pulled up right in front of me, but I believe that there is additional policy language in the housing element on that.
Okay. As it's written, I specifically am not going to support it just because objective 18 under community planning. I think that community planning has transformed into something that it was not meant to be. I've pointed out, Directors Zornita, that even at meetings that unfortunately Planning Commission staff was holding, it was communicated to the general public in these community planning things that there were, that the efforts were to create tools that created environments that allowed local people, unelected officials, to go and supersede the county government. And I think that, I think that that is a symptom, and the disease is this objective 18. So for that only reason, I won't support this specific item. Thank you.
Commissioner Myers?
Thank you. I'm going to move for approval.
Okay, got a motion by Commissioner Myers, second by Commissioner Kemp. But I do see Ms. Zornita, you're in the queue, so go ahead.
Thanks. I just wanted to clarify for the record that the objective 18, those policies are now reflective in new 3.2.4 in the, in the new about community planning, just so the record was clear.
All right, thank you. Don't see any more board discussion, so please cast your votes. Thank you. Don't see any more board discussion, so please cast your votes.
Motion carried forward to two. Commissioners Cameron Sepeda and Wustel voted no.
All right, we'll move on to B4.
All right. Good evening, Commissioners Jay Collins, Planning Commission staff. Oh, that's not the touchscreen. I'm sorry. Up next is going to be Section Four. Section Four is development. So we're almost halfway through this. Again, future land use section, so these are building upon each other. Think of them as chapters. Development for the actual section is thought of as creates safe, livable, and sustainable communities serving the needs of all residents that provide opportunities for housing, jobs, and services in close proximity with a variety of mobility choices. So let's dig down into it a little bit. One of the first things that you may do is go, well, where are the services and where are the jobs for those people, for those communities? One tool that we have for that is locational criteria, commercial locational criteria. So within that toolbox, something was added, and that is the context classification map, which works in conjunction with the 2040 cost affordable map. There's also consideration of a new category that will be discussed later, Neighborhood Mixed Use 6 as a category. Its non-residential uses do not include intensive commercial and industrial uses. Transit-oriented development, that's also some policy that exists today in the plan. That was actually put into the plan many, many moons ago when it was Department of Community Affairs. Times have changed. Tallahassee has changed. There is a different way that we can actually do transit-oriented development if we had fixed guideway in unincorporated Hillsborough County. As it stands today, the only place that you have that is in the city of Tampa, just to the south of us, there by the arena with the streetcar. But this does allow us that opportunity if we should have fixed guideway transit about publicly initiated amendments for station areas. Innovative housing options. So congregate living facilities densities may be calculated using either the dwelling unit per gross acre or the floor area ratio. So how does that work? You actually have that within the land use categories. The land use category has a prescribed dwelling unit per gross acre or floor area ratio. How big is the building floor area ratio? And again, that would be through a rezoning. Non-residential uses at specific locations. Again, the order of the day is changing things up. Part of this is the principle of that organization. Activity centers have been removed from the plan, yet we still have some of those same tools and conversations that we need to have. So specificity has been added in this section to talk about some of the interstate interchanges. And we talked about it earlier with development. There's a lot that goes into development, so there's a lot of other considerations that were built into Section Four. Retained, renumbered, or simplified, clarified. This includes mixed use. We've talked about that some already. Land use suitability. We've already talked about that a little bit. Neighborhood and community-serving uses. Talked about infill, commercial redevelopment. The energy industrial part, that is within this section. It was simply renumbered. None of the policy itself has changed. Airport and seaports is held here, electrical power generation facilities, as well as telecommunication facilities. Agency comments. There were no formal objections. We've had great conversations with staff. You do see in your backup some of those conversations. Consistency review. It's consistent with a variety of different policies within the future land use, as well as within environmental and sustainability and the mobility, but primarily out of the future land use. Urban service area, this is a lot that we're talking about where we would be driving some of these developments to occur within the urban areas. Tools for implementation. You evaluate things. You change up policy over time, and that is that tool for implementation and evaluation of it. Growth management, management of the natural resources through the environmental section, as well as to promote connectivity that you will find in your mobility section, which is spoken throughout these policies. And with that, the Planning Commission found the proposed text amendment HCCPA 2324 consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan. I thank you for your time, and this concludes my presentation.
Thank you, and thank you for your energy on that one. This is a public hearing. Each speaker will be given three minutes. I do have three speakers that are signed up. We'll start with Nancy Pataraki. Pataraki? May I butcher that? I'm sorry? All right, and then followed by Calista Snyder. Good evening.
Nancy Pataraki, 1-8128 Gun Highway, Odessa, Florida. It's the top one. And we're going to bounce down because I only have three minutes. Two pictures. Let's go there. Thank you. I'm here tonight because there's a lot of waste in this process, and I think you have a great opportunity at the start of any rezoning request to have a plan in place that will reduce the number of cases that come through the process and end up only being denied later. And that's because they're not appropriate to begin with. In the northwest corner of Hillsborough County, Odessa has lots of lakes, lots of curvy roads, and we have a lot of properties with one to five acres of land that sits there on an intersection that now could possibly have requests for commercial planning that is not going to be compatible. We'll go through the whole process. It'll end up getting denied, and unfortunately, it wastes a lot of the community's time and yours as well. So one of the things that I've looked at is the commercial location map. And in this map, this is one of the commercial locations you're looking at. All those corners are pretty much engulfed by the city of St. Petersburg's watershed. There's wells in there, and these are potential, as they state, to determine appropriate location for commercial development. We have also properties that have lakes on every corner. It's another intersection on the map. We have intersections that are so busy that you take your own life going through them during rush hours. And maybe some of you are familiar with Loose Lake Fern and Gunn, north and south at 40 to 45 miles an hour merging together, and then within 300 feet have another intersection at Michigan Avenue. And then we have this cluster where we've had deaths, we've had injuries, and I live up the street, and I hear the accidents. And they're not infrequent. The road departures are not infrequent. And I think if you were to go drive down there, you'll see that they're not compliant with the Keystone Plan. There's loads of cars. The school has children out there directing traffic. They have cars that pull out when there's no one directing traffic. They're parked along Gunn Highway. They're parked around the wells, and there's accidents. So I'd ask you, please, think of the people who live here already. Think of the land that's around these homes. Don't put businesses in office buildings that compare into people's backyards. Be a risk to the children that live there, and also remove this map. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Ms. Snyder? Is Ms. Snyder here? Okay, don't see Ms. Snyder. Regina Hernandez? You are here. Over. Virtually, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I'm on the phone, yeah.
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
I... You'll sign time for this topic. I think I signed up for the wrong one. Sorry.
Okay. All right, Regina Hernandez? Okay, all right. Is there anyone else to speak on that? Kami?
Good evening. Kami Corbett with the Law Firm of Hillward and Henderson. And I think the last speaker demonstrates some of the challenges we have with commercial locational criteria. I think many of you remember the Planning Commission was coming forward before with some revisions to the commercial locational criteria, which are not proposed in this particular amendment that we talked about we were going to deal with in this future land use update. Now, in fairness to staff, as you see, you have eight elements before you. A lot of time and effort went into Goals One and Two. We didn't have as much time to work on Goals Four through Eight, some of which are more problematic than others. I think you really still need to look at commercial locational criteria. It is an outdated principle. It is something that was in place back when the plan originated, before we had so many established development patterns or lack of development patterns, which was demonstrated. So using intersections solely to determine appropriateness for commercial location criteria or eliminating something for commercial activity just because it's outside of an intersection, you see time and time again where you want to make exceptions to it, and it's actually gatekeeping because the Planning Commission staff is making a decision before you based on these policies that says, well, certain square footage can't be considered here, or it must be considered here. We might not think it's compatible, but it must be considered here. Now, it doesn't say you have to approve the development, but it sets an expectation for property owners. My property is at a corner. It's at an intersection. I look to the plan that says I can be here. So I think it doesn't really fairly establish a good criteria. I think you all have neighborhood protection policies that you can look to for addressing compatibility, and whether you transmit this tonight or not, I think between now and transmittal and adoption, that we really should continue to look at commercial locational criteria in its entirety and even look at whether we still even need that as a policy in the first place.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak on this? All right, we'll go into board discussion. Commissioner Wustel?
I did want to address the one speaker, and yes, she's right. I think she's probably referring to me. My son actually played flag football on one of those direct pictures where the kids were directing traffic. It's an absolute nightmare, and actually, they got kind of forced there because of one of the large contracts we have with a soccer company that kind of holds domain over the big field up there. The whole thing on why they made that decision, which is unsafe for the children and the community. And also, a lot of that is because of Pasco's unfettered growth along our line, which we're paying for on our infrastructure. Can we do... I don't... One thing in there, it didn't sound like we could do what she was looking for because we can't tell someone they're not allowed to come and petition their elected officials. I mean, they can come no matter what, right? They're at a risk of spending money and getting told no, but we can't set something that says...
Yes, correct. Somebody can file a zoning request, even if it is just absolutely on its face inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. They still would go through that process.
Can we... I've had a lot of complaints about the commercial locational criterias. I've had complaints about overlays. I actually think that it was a storage company in Wy Mama recently that it was like all of the restrictions that were in place, they didn't want it to be a storage, but all of the restrictions that were in place left it to where it was like the only applicable thing that could go there. Isn't that what happened on the entry property to the new Wy Mama Village? We had a zoning. I believe it was actually Ms. Corbett's own zoning, where I think it was commercial locational criteria where it's not what the community wanted. It's not what the developer wanted, but it was, hey, we have all of these restrictions in place. So you asked for something, and it's one of those situations where you have to be careful what you ask for was that storage company, and it was a result of commercial locational criteria. So can we... Is it in here? Can we delay the vote on this until we hear more?
I'll just jump in on that. We could not... Because I know there's one I want to do this with. We can not transmit and send it back to planning to discuss with stakeholders, correct?
Yes, Commissioner. Certainly. You can continue the item, and we can bring it back at a later date with some additional changes. Certainly, if there's any direction as a part of that continuance that you want us to look at, that would be helpful to us.
So Commissioner Wustel, is that what you're doing, making a...
A move to continue, and they can work out the scheduling, I guess.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Wustel, a second by Commissioner Myers. Commissioner Kemp, I still see you in the queue. Go ahead.
Yes, and I probably disagree, and I can't recall the exact sub of the Wy Mama storage unit in terms of, I think waivers were made and things like that in order to put that there. But I have continually asked about the commercial locational criteria. And, you know, I have questions about it. On the map that she showed us, was that... That was where they could cite it under the current... What was that map exactly?
I believe that was a version of the context classification map intersections. So just to clarify, we currently have a map that we use in the plan today. We refer to the long-range transportation plan map, the cost affordable map. We use that to determine whether an intersection is qualifying. Now, that being said, today in the plan with the adopted language, you still may ask for commercial uses, non-residential uses in locations that do not meet commercial locational criteria. We have a waiver process in place where an applicant can request a waiver, and they can provide an explanation on how they have unique circumstances and why they feel like there should be a non-residential use on their location. With the update, we are keeping that map, and we are suggesting adding another map that would open up some additional qualifying intersections. That map is called the context classification map. That map is currently adopted in the comprehensive plan today under the mobility section. That was adopted a couple of years ago. That was an initiative that was run by community and infrastructure planning with Hillsborough County with tight coordination with Planning Commission and Development Services and other agencies. That map is important because it considers transportation and land use together in the same map. So you can see the designation of the roadways based on that. So we added that map because we had limitations with commercial locational criteria and everything in the plan with Senate Bill 250, which was in place at the time of our outreach. Though that doesn't apply anymore to our county, we did not want to do a bait and switch with all the material that we had shown to the public and to you all and the Planning Commissioners over the last year with all of our updates and workshops. So the three changes that we have asked for with commercial locational criteria today as part of this goal is, one, to add the context classification map as an additional map for qualifying intersections. Two, we've added another future land use category called Neighborhood Mixed Use 6. Currently, we have Neighborhood Mixed Use 4. The Neighborhood Mixed Use 6, the goal behind that was to allow for a range of uses that would not include the more noxious uses that are associated with like heavy industrial, light industrial manufacturing uses. So that category would allow for a little extra FAR, so intensity, and a little extra density at six units an acre to kind of bridge that gap between NMU 4 and SMU 6 today, which you see in a lot of plan amendments because that allows everything from residential to industrial and all the commercial in between. So that's the second change that we did. The third change was to add some stronger language on community plans. So in instances like Keystone, I would say the Keystone Community Plan has very strong language on commercial. They have a rural activity center that is outlined at Gunn Highway and Mobley, and that is where they'd like to see their commercial according to their plan. The plan does say that there can be other considerations of commercial, but that commercial needs to be in a rural design, and there are specifications on that. It needs to be in a rural scale, so something smaller in scale, and it also needs to accommodate either agricultural or equestrian interests. So you see how that kind of further limits what can be considered in Keystone. That is very strong language in their community plan, and we have brought that to you many times in our consistency findings. So those are the three minor changes we're making today. I would also put on the record that Planning Commission staff recognizes the outdated policies that are located under the current Objective 22, which is the commercial locational criteria, hence us doing over a year of study. Twenty... 22, right? What year is 24? Yes, in 2022, we brought it back to you. We brought you in January of 2023. You all decided you wanted to see this folded into the update, so that is why we are here this evening. But again, based on Senate Bill 250, we weren't able to propose any of the previous changes that we showed you. We just had those three, I would say... I mean, not that they're not substantive, but they are more minor in nature than the kind of overhaul that we had previously presented to you.
And I would just say, Senate Bill 250, this whole process, it really interfered with the procedure because I agree with you all. You couldn't go forward with legal advice saying that we were under Senate Bill 250, which is not to do anything more restrictive due to the hurricane in Fort Myers within 100 miles, and we barely fit in it. But there were some legal concerns that we could not do anything under that. And then we were written out of it in the more recent version, and Hillsborough County was not in it. But in the meantime, what can you do? I mean, I think there were legal issues, and you're presenting from the public all that time. So, I mean, I think it really hampered. Thinking about some things, I was trying to remember at the beginning of this for a little bit. I remember, oh, yeah, it's been 250, really. Hampered this really doing a full-throated kind of consideration of some things, and you wouldn't want to bring it to the public in one way. And you wouldn't want to bring it to the public in one way and ultimately proceed in another way, or vice versa.
Commissioner Myers?
The reason I second it, because after Ms. Kami Corbett spoke regarding the commercial location criteria and not being ready yet for B4, that it needs to be some more communication between the planning and the community that she represents. So Melissa, how long you think it would take? I mean, it doesn't have to be tonight, and that was one of the reasons I voted to delay that it can come back, hearing her comments.
Yeah, I mean, certainly, we would, we would need some time to have some meetings to look at alterations that, as you, as you can hear, there are, there's representatives from the community in Keystone and from the development community. And I'm not sure we're going to find perfect compromise, but we'll, we can aim to, but that'll take a little bit of time.
So I'm going to move to defer this, this item.
Yeah, well, I think that's, that motion, you second it as motion, so, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that you all had good direction. Do you have that?
If I'm understanding it correctly, the focus is on the portion of this goal, because there are a lot of topics within it that relates to the commercial locational criteria.
Okay, very good. So we've got a motion by Commissioner Wustel, a second by Commissioner Myers. Seeing you in the queue, please record your votes.
Motion carried six to zero.
Okay, great. We will move on to B5, planning.
Andrea Papendrew, Planning Commission Staff, presenting on behalf of Carla Yanoz. This is Goal Five for the Future Land Use Section Update on Agriculture. First, a proposed change for this goal is the addition of the Goal Five language, which includes descriptive language pertaining to agricultural and rural residential land uses to meet the needs of rural communities. Most the existing language in our agricultural objectives today in the future land use element are being retained, and this has been in coordination with meetings with Agricultural Economic Development Council and the Farm Bureau. Some policies are proposed for deletion, but that is due to discontinued programs or redundant language. The other changes are grammatical revisions and renumbering of policies. No proposed changes to the WVR2 or RP2 policies are proposed at this time. So we did not receive any agency objections, and as previous goal presenters have mentioned, there is a link to all agency comments and any staff responses in your backup. Staff have met on three occasions with the Agricultural Economic Development Council, one meeting with the Hillsborough Soil and Water Conservation District, and one meeting with the Farm Bureau, and we received no objections. Proposed revisions are consistent with the following goals, objectives, and policies of the comprehensive plan. This includes language on the rural area, providing areas for long-term agricultural uses, and the rural pattern development language in the existing community design component of the future land use element. Goals also consistent with the existing future land use agricultural policies and language on ensuring development reflects the character of the neighborhood and development pattern. Based on this, Planning Commission found the proposed text amendment HCCPA 23-25 consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Each speaker will get three minutes, and I do see we have four people signed up. The first one is virtual, Lynne Latrell. Are you on?
I am here. Can you hear me?
Okay, please proceed. Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
I first of all, my name is Lynne Latrell. I have been sworn in. I live at 4708 Charlie Taylor Road in Plant City, Florida. I'm roughly a mile from the Polk County border. The first thing I want to, how do you keep in mind is that the stakeholders that have been represented in this plan are primarily developers and their lawyers. The existing residents and rural communities and the farmers are very minimally representative in this whole process. We've all heard the quote that there's no farmers, no food. In the economy that we're in, we need to keep this in mind. What I find missing in your plan is the planning and protection of areas for current, and most importantly, future agricultural uses. None of us are smart enough to know what the crops of the future will be. I work for an agricultural company, which farms. We currently farm berries, but we, none of us know what the future holds, and if we do not protect and allocate land for the future, we are doing ourselves a great disservice. In addition to that, the reality of today, for those of us who live in a rural area, is what is happening? Farmers are selling their property to developers, and they deserve it. They deserve the money. I understand that they can make more by selling their land and farming that, and I do not blame them. But what happens is that developers buy that property, they move in, the farmers move on, and the surrounding residents are paying the price. The existing plan and the plan that I've read is going to be circumvented by local cities, especially Plant Cities, and developers as these lands are annexed by local cities. Wording needs to be added to your plan to protect those of us who live in these rural areas from forced annexations in the future as this farmland is sold off and municipalities expand. Language needs to be added to this plan to protect unincorporated residents from inappropriate development intensities as agricultural lands are transitioned. One other note I would like to make to Ms. Kemp, I appreciate your comments, there should absolutely be no flex wording. There should be black and white, no gray areas. Commissioner Olin, I appreciate your comment that residential, I'm sorry, Res 9 is definitely urban. We are Hillsborough County, not New York City. Res 9 is an urban designation, not suburban. And for all of you Commissioners, I just truly want to express that please show up for your unincorporated residents.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for your comments. Thank you, you're out of time, but thank you for your comments. Thank you. Next is Travis Latrell, virtually. Travis, you there?
Yes, this is Travis Latrell.
Go ahead, Travis. Go ahead, we can hear you.
I live at 4708 Charlie Taylor Road. I'm in unincorporated Hillsborough County. Ninety percent of the survey responses that you received stated that your constituents wanted recreation, conservation, and agricultural, but all the plan updates are focusing on where industrial could go and where a commercial mixed use could be added. These are diametrically opposed. We are not, what you're, what are, what are we doing basically to ensure citizens' concerns are being prioritized over developers, acquisitions, and profitability? What are you doing to prevent city commissioners like Plant City from learning a muck and doing things your rural residents completely oppose? I met with my District Four Commissioner last year concerning conservation and environmental sensitivity in this area, and he invited me to have a cup of coffee with him sometime. So I reached out to his office nearly a dozen times and received no response, specifically when I asked for his support to oppose the Blue Steel project that's going in here in Plant City. Where is that breakdown in communication? Is his staff failing him, or is he dodging our hard questions? The Itchybackasassa Creek is also known as the failed river basin, yet Plant City continues to annex land in this area, and they also subsequently changed the land's use and dismissed our flooding concerns of the unincorporated Hillsborough County as well as Polk County. What are you doing as a commission to ensure that 100-year floodplain only floods 1% per year, which is the definition of 100-year floodplain, unlike what has historically happened from 2016 to 2021, where we flooded several times each and every year due to the rapid development in our area? Moreover, Plant City sends items out for comment on their PCA amendment. Why hasn't Hillsborough County responded to those? I spoke with my Plant City City Commissioner and their plant, and they clearly stated the reason they are continuing to proceed as they are is because Hillsborough County has failed to provide comments on behalf of their residents. I don't understand what the breakdown in communication is, and I don't understand why we're not being fully represented. I also need you, and I encourage you to, basically make infill development with in Plant City the priority, not just the, you know, agricultural areas where developers can rapidly consume land and change it at will. We need to do infill development prior to doing all of the other things, because if not, we will lose all of our agricultural lands, because my neighbors will simply consider profitability over our historic lifestyle. So is there any room in Hillsborough County's plan for agriculture? That's the real question, and what are we going to do to protect it? And I would also like to still sit down with my District Four Commissioner and have that cup of coffee and talk about conservation and talk about environmentally sensitive areas.
Thank you, Mr. Latrell. Thank you, Mr. Latrell. Thank you for your comments. Next is Gretchen Hoak. She's here in person. Good evening, Ms. Hoak.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Gretchen Hoak, Executive Director of Rain Frog Ranch, located in unincorporated Hillsborough County, District Four, 5513 Rain Frog Lane. I do have a picture. I apologize. My time could stop till we get it up. Thank you. I'm so sorry. Thank you for your help. So I stand before you this evening to discuss our agricultural land in Hillsborough County. We have all seen the projected sprawl data provided by several different sources. Here is a map of the sprawl scenario by 2040 from the University of Florida. This is reflecting future development following current patterns of development. Please pay close attention to Hillsborough County. The red is developed, and the green is protected. We can do better than that. According to Dr. Thomas Hocker from the University of Florida in his agricultural 2040-27, 2070 Florida statewide summary, there will be a 23% increase in population by 2040. That's 4.9 million more residents than in 2019. We know that they're coming, and we cannot think five years in advance. We need to be thinking 500 years in advance to properly secure our agricultural lands from development. With that said, I encourage Hillsborough County to include an optional agricultural element in the comprehensive plans, designating a farmland overlay and incorporating it into the future land use map, as has been done in Marion County. In regards to the plan for 2024-2029, I want to thank staff for their hard work and efforts put into this plan. It was incredible, the amount of work. One thing that did stick out that was staff recommending creating connections between natural and built environment. This is a very sensitive, environmentally sensitive situation due to the amount of ecologically valuable land that has already been manipulated or lost because of urban sprawl and development. We really must limit fragmentation and encourage connectivity for agriculture, outdoor recreation, and our remarkable wildlife, of course. Please do not allow urban sprawl into rural areas. To include State Road 60, as you can hear, Plant City, we're having a hard time. And Plant City was built with agricultural roots, and in order for us to remain the winter strawberry capital, we need to protect and safeguard Plant City's agricultural lands and farmers. Agriculture is a valuable economic resource, and it's under major threat of development and loss of farmers. So in Section B5, Policy 517, it talks about exploring opportunities for incentives to remain in agriculture. In talking with your constituents at these meetings also, what I'm hearing is that there is a need for the next generation to have an incentive to get into farming, possibly social media approach to attract the younger generation. This made me think of Publix and the University of Florida. There is definitely an opportunity for a program, possibly through our agricultural colleges in the state of Florida, and environment, reputable agricultural companies such as Publix, for example, some type of a farming trade program that we could create.
Thank you, Ms. Hoak. Yeah, I'm sorry. Great job. Sorry, you ran out of time. Regina Hernandez.
I can give her my three minutes, right?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think you could, yeah, go ahead.
It won't be that long, honestly, I promise. I just wanted to say on Policy 518, if we think outside of the box, we can capitalize on our historical agricultural component in this county. There are several opportunities here. We are so rich in our agricultural history, and this history needs to be shared with the world. If you have any, anyone that needs to reach out, Rain Frog Ranch, I'd be happy to help. Thank you.
Thank you. Great comments. Is there anybody else that wants to speak to this? Okay, great. Well, we will go on to board discussion. Commissioner Wustel?
I'm just, I'm going to step in for the Planning Commission here. Actually, I, in the past year, I'm happy to speak to Mr. Latrell. I hope he understands, though, and it's a reason that we tried to fix the county charter, and it should be fixed. Most people don't understand that the three of us each represent more people than 11 governors, so meeting people for coffee is quite challenging. It's a dynamic that we must fix structurally so people get better local representation. But I had last year expressed my desire to make sure that we included the agriculture in all of these conversations. Melissa Zornita and her staff, Ms. Latrell, if you're listening, has 100% done that. They've participated. We have an official Agriculture Economic Development Council. She has participated in those meetings, so much to the extent that the official Florida Farm Bureau, if none of you did receive it or get to read it, but to the speaker and anyone else that's concerned that we're not including agriculture in the conversation. The official Florida Farm Bureau chapter of Florida here, Hillsborough County chapter, sent in a letter of support for these exact element approvals, and they represent 4,000 active members across only Hillsborough County of the agriculture community. We are taking it serious. I'm pretty sure that we cannot restrict Plant City from annexing. That would be illegal for us to do. I would say that we have double the amount of environmental land than the second county below us in the entire state of Florida. I think we're somewhere around 70. They're at 35, maybe I'm off by a couple of thousand. I mean, this county has worked hard for that. I will say, though, that even some berry farmers are on their way out because of ELAP property choking them out, and that's a, that's a realistic thing that we have to deal with and, and address, and be careful what we're, be careful what you ask for. And we do include them, we want them here. We understand the economic impact that they offer to the county, and the Planning Commission staff has 100% included them in every conversation, specifically, she said, on behalf of Hillsborough County Farm Bureau, we would like to thank everyone involved working on the ongoing efforts to update the Hillsborough County's comprehensive plans future element. The Planning Commission staff engaged the agriculture community early. They have listened to our concerns throughout this process. For this reason, we support the board approving the update for transmittal to the state for review and comment, and for that reason, I move for approval.
Okay, got a motion by Commissioner Wustel, a second by Commissioner Cameron Cepeda, and Commissioner Kemp?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank the speakers for the, for raising the issues that they did. I agree, we had some discussion, but almost in the past that, I'm not sure when, when it took place exactly, but there was some serious discussion about Plant City and the annexation. That is why their population is growing, is that they're annexing, and they can annex in very strange ways, which leave huge pockets. And, but that's all statutorily by our state legislature, that, you know, all rests with them, and it's driven, you know, probably by, partially by here, but by other places as well. Again, I'll disagree with the characterization that our ELAP, I think our ELAP program has done everything possible to protect wildlife corridors and to, it's the bigger threat to any kind of, to our loss of agricultural land, I believe is truly the, you know, development moving in there. That's one of the things at the urban service line, infill redevelopment, all of that is, to me, a way to plan and look at the future. And as I, after this, I'd like to make a motion to reconsider Goal Two after the comments that were made, to, to look at the flex in the same way that we are looking at commercial locational criteria in the other goal, as long as we're considering that.
Okay, well, maybe, I wonder if we should do that at the very end, then?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yes, okay, very good. Okay, great. And those are great comments, and I don't see anyone else in the queue, and obviously I represent the overwhelming majority of the agricultural lands, and great job, speakers on this issue. And listen, I hear you, as we, me and Commissioner Kemp are going back and forth about Brandon. I grew up in East County, and there's not just agriculture in East, South County as well, heavy agriculture. And I've watched, you know, And I've watched, you know, my little cow town in Orange Groves turn into an urban area, and it's sad to see. There's so many other issues besides what this board deals with. I think Commissioner Wostel and Commissioner Kemp alluded to that, things that are governed by the state, but also federal. I mean, we, we compete now with, with Mexico, who can pick them and ship them cheaper than we can pick them and sell them to Publix right here. And one of the tough parts is, a lot of these families are four, five, six, even generations. We know them, Commissioner Wostel. Six generations, and sometimes the kids now are figuring out value of their land, and these properties are put in trusts, and unfortunately, it's very enticing. And one of the other tough things we deal with, with, with our agriculture communities is devaluing their property by, by not allowing a density. A lot of the, for a lot of these farmers, their biggest asset is their property, and whenever we in some way hamper that with maybe overlays or, or restrictions, it devalues their property and hurts their ability to get credit. But I hear you. The speakers did a great job today on this issue, and as the representative for East and South County, I promise you, I'll do everything I can to preserve our agriculture communities, because it is the heart and soul of Hillsborough County. So, so right now, we have a motion by, did you, oh, Commissioner Wostel, a second by Commissioner Cameron Cepeda. Please record your votes.
Motion carries 6 to 0.
Great, and I want to make sure, Commissioner Kemp, I'm not passing up, you meant when we get to the last goal?
I'd just like, I'd like to do it now, just because it was just mentioned, and just see if we have some appetite for doing that. I'd like to make a motion to reconsider B2. That's Goal 2 in terms of the flex, yes.
Commissioner Kemp, you were, because you were a vote against the motion, there needs to be a motion to reconsider made by someone who is on the prevailing side.
Was I on that one, B2? I didn't think I was.
Yes.
Oh.
If you could, if she can just tell me what she's wanting about the flex, I'll...
Okay.
Well, the flex, as I described, the flex is, you can flex a different, more intense, if you like, property, you know, under certain rules, over adjacent piece of land. It's allowed now. There's certain communities that have written it out and don't allow it, like Ruskin and Keystone and some others, but that's what I brought up, and we can learn more about it. I'd just like to, you know, have them bring it back, explain to us what it is, and do some consideration, and, you know, the fact that we had a speaker that noticed that, I really, I think it's, you know, resulted in some poor, with some issues.
All right. Well, I guess we would have to...
I just don't know what the, I don't know what that might cause, what outcomes that might create, so I don't want to, but if we can fix it later...
You'd have to have a motion, I think, right now to, to reconsider correct. We would have to have a...
Well, I understand that, I know that a prevailing side has to do it, but I'm just saying it's, are we trying to kill it, or just saying we want to also, we want to transmit Goal 2 without the flex approvals and then hear more? I don't, but what would...
We could do that. Let me, first of, we could do that, but again, we'd have to have a motion to just reconsider it and open up the discussion, I think, so...
Yes, and if I may, the flex has been a provision that's been in the comprehensive plan since 1989. The intent of it is to accommodate the fact that across Hillsborough County, which is the size of the state of Rhode Island, you know, we may have drawn land use lines, maybe bisecting properties, for example, and this allows an adjustment of those land use lines through a plan development rezoning, which comes to approval through the board if, if there's some adjustment that needs to be made. So it is, it's something that has been established, and because, again, of the process we've been through, you know, we had not proposed to any of the stakeholders that there were going to be any changes to that, so I don't know, you know, how they would weigh in on that.
Well, Commissioner Cohen, I see you want to speak. Well, we haven't really opened it up for reconsideration, so I guess we're in a spot. Well, I'll go ahead.
Well, what I'd like to say is that I'm not sure that I, I'm not sure that I agree with eliminating it. I think it, it clearly needs more discussion, and I'm wondering why we can't transmit and look at the flex issue completely separately.
Yeah, I think that's...
Isn't that...
Yeah, yeah, so I, I don't see a motion for reconsideration, so let's, let's move on. Where were we? We were on B, we're on 6 now? Oh, no, 6, yeah. B6, planning?
Andrea Papendrew, Planning Commission staff. This is Goal 6 for the future land use section update. So this is, Goal 6 is the built environment. The community design component currently is at the back of the future land use element. Staff is proposing to move this section into the main body under Goal 6. So the community design component has policies on a wide range of topics, including urban, suburban, rural form, building facade and placement, non-residential mixed use and commercial, and the vehicular and pedestrian network. So the community design component sets the stage for the Land Development Code and its specific standards, and the existing language in the future land use today has, it's not as much as regulatory language, but more uses words like should, encourage, and promote that enable the Land Development Code. As you've heard from previous testimony today, with the future land use update, we did uptake a conservative approach with Senate Bill 250. So the scope of our changes with this goal was knowing we couldn't change any language that could be perceived as burdensome or regulatory. So this section update is really to set a baseline to move over that existing community design component language and build upon it in, in the future. Planning Commission did find this consistent, but they also noted that this should be an area of further refinement for, for the future land use section. The second change is moving two policies to the, to the public schools element of the unincorporated county comprehensive plan, and these policies fit within the existing language of the public schools element related to the planning and design of schools in regard to pedestrian, bicycle, and automobiles. Third change added language to an existing policy under the rural area subsection to support existing agricultural uses and maintain rural character development. Fourth change added language, modified language, excuse me, based on comments received from the Hillsborough County Conservation and Environmental Lands Management Department to require the use of native plants and reduce wildlife hazards for landscaping. And then the final change added a new policy, Policy 6.8.8, which encourages the county to coordinate land use and transportation. So for Goal 6, we did receive comments from external agencies, no formal objections, but there were some submitted requested language changes. Planning Commission staff have crafted responses to any agency comments not addressed, and those can be found in your backup. Proposed revisions are consistent with the following goals, objectives, and policies of the comprehensive plan, specifically the design guidelines, which ensure a compatible development pattern with the existing surrounding area and provide neighborhood and residential areas protections from incompatible commercial uses. Also consistent with several mobility section policies on prioritizing the safety of all users, providing context-sensitive and complete street guidelines, building a comprehensive bicycle and pedestrian system, and providing interconnectivity and access management. Based on this, Planning Commission found proposed text amendment HC/CPA 23-26 consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of unincorporated Hillsborough County comprehensive plan. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Each speaker will get three minutes, and I have Ms. Hope. Are you still here?
Good evening again. Gretchen Hope, District 4, Rain Frog Lane. Basically, with so much growth anticipated and the challenges that we already face from newcomers unfamiliar with our surroundings and the natural world, Hillsborough County has many opportunities within its built environment plans to educate the public. I like how they're including to incorporate only native plants and trees into the landscaping, and they mentioned the wildlife. I just want to, on the B6, Policy 671, I want to encourage that it's really important for people moving here to know how special and unique our particular slice of Florida heaven is, and once people move here, they are now responsible for their part of stewardship on this land. I just think that there are opportunities, and I'd be happy to help in any way in educating the public on, on our wildlife and our landscaping. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hope. All right, Regina Hernandez, I think I saw her leave. All right, she's not here. Anyone else want to speak to this? Kami, go ahead.
Kami Corbett, again, with the Law Firm of Hillward and Henderson. This one kind of bothers me a little bit, troubles me a little bit more than the last goal, where there were some policies we've been talking about for a couple of years that still need to be worked on and should be continued, and the element in itself is okay. This particular element, while some of it is existing policy, it's really duplicative of things that we have in other parts of the plan. And I'll give you an example. There's a discussion about rural and urban forms of development here, and no wonder everybody's confused, because the urban area says nine and up, and the suburban says up to nine. So nine is included in both suburban and urban, which is why it's confusing, but we just talked about that in another element, but here it appears again in this element. And what I think would be appropriate with this element is, to the extent that there's anything or any policies that the planning commission think that should be included somewhere within the future land use element, that they be dispersed into those other elements rather than having this be a separate element, which is kind of duplicative of other things. Like, there's things like setbacks that are governed here, crime prevention standards, and the reason why I get concerned about that as a lawyer is, although these policies seem like they're just suggesting that we should do something, there are policies in the comprehensive plan that are regulatory, and if we get to have a development that's challenged, the judge gets to decide for him or herself whether our development is consistent with the comprehensive plan, and so we can't rely on the planning commission's well-intended saying, "Well, we never would find a project inconsistent because of any of these policies, because we think these other policies are more controlling." We don't know what a judge would do, and so I would think in this instance, it's more prudent for, to have staff look at this, see if there are any things that are in here that don't appear anywhere else, and find them a new home.
Thank you. Ms., Ms. Leinhardt, did you have something? Go ahead.
Yes, please. Thank you very much, Melissa Leinhardt, for the record, Planning Commission staff. I just wanted to clarify, based on what Ms. Corbett testified to, is that the Goal 6 policies and objectives and goals that are listed in your backup and what you're looking at tonight, those are adopted in the plan today with one addition, one new policy, and that's regarding coordinating land use and transportation to increase efficiency of the transportation network and plan for targeted levels of service. Everything else is in the plan today. I just wanted to clarify that for the record.
All right, we'll move into board discussion.
I'll move approval. I don't think it's too bad to have it all, I think it's good for people to be able to look at a built environment thing, even if it is, duplicates some of the other areas, and, and as Ms. Leinhardt said, it's, it has one new facet, which sounds important.
Okay, we have a motion to transmit. Is there a second? A second by Commissioner Cohen. Commissioner Wostel.
I spent a lot of time on this one. I was frankly very confused. I, I don't really, I guess my brain doesn't, for me, it's like, for built environment, it's, hey, can we not put oak trees that have caused unmeasurable damage to our infrastructure in the county, right next to sidewalks everywhere, and included into private communities? That, to me, is like, okay, let's control the built environment. Florida, natural Florida landscaping is another great point. Actually, we talk about some of Tampa Bay water, so I'm going to make a substitute motion for non-transmittal.
Okay, we got to have a substitute motion for non-transmittal by Commissioner Wostel. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second by Cameron Cepeda, Commissioner Cameron Cepeda, and I don't see, okay, I see planning in the queue, so let me let Commissioner Myers go first.
Of course.
Yeah, go ahead.
Well, I was going to direct my question to Melissa. In regard to what Kami Corbett just said, there's a nine here and a nine there, would that kind of change where we have it in several places in the document? Can it only be in one place, or it won't be so confusing, because I think that's, that is her issue?
Yes, certainly, that's something we could take another pass at this goal and policies, to, to look for those opportunities, to either remove additional duplication, or perhaps see if policies relate more to a different topic, moving them there. That was, as Ms. Papendrew mentioned, something that the Planning Commission had, had flagged and asked us to do as a subsequent action, so it sounds like it might be something that would be better to be done before transmittal, and so we could continue the item to, and bring it back.
Yeah, and I don't see anyone else in the queue. I, I was confused by this one, too. To me, I felt like we were talking about land development code stuff with the specifics. You know, I look at the comprehensive plan as this big umbrella, and then the LDC gets into the very specifics of things, kind of the nitty-gritty, and Adam, I know you and I talked about this, and for me, I almost was going to move not to transmit it, but I, I do understand that there could be maybe some more fruitful discussion with stakeholders to kind of, I think we use the word clean it up some, because I, I do think that that has to be done, because I'm just scared that we're getting into an area where if we start having duplication with the comp plan, the LDC, and then that comp plan starts getting very specific on issues that should be in the LDC, I'm scared what that will turn into. So if you guys can maybe keep that in mind, if Commissioner Wostel's motion to continue...
I'll withdraw my, my second, but I think now it's a motion to continue, correct?
I will amend my motion to a motion to continue.
Okay, so we have a, a second amended motion to continue by Commissioner Wostel, a second by Commissioner Cohen. Okay. Any other discussion? Please record your vote.
Motion carried 6 to 0.
All right, let's move on to B7, planning.
Gillian Massey with Planning Commission staff. I'll be presenting on Goal 7 of the future land use section, which is relating to natural The proposed text amendments under Goal 7 does not include the deletion of existing policies or move them to other sections of the comprehensive plan. The proposed text amendments are minor in nature, providing clarifying and descriptive language within the existing policy. The first change is the addition of Goal 7, which says, "To seek a balance between the preservation of natural systems and the built environment while simultaneously being prepared for adverse natural events. Provide an environment where people naturally interact with each other in their community, including streets, parks, and other public facilities." Other changes include, under Objective 7.1, which is the addition of descriptive language relating to encouraging growth that is sustainable and resilient while protecting environmentally sensitive resources, and also language that is changed regarding the port of Tampa Bay. Currently, Policy 7.4.5 reads that the Planning Commission will transmit a copy of all land use plan amendment applications to the port of Tampa Bay that are within a port activity center or within 250 feet of that area, as identified in their master plan. The revision rewrites the policy to generally state that the Planning Commission will transmit to the port of Tampa Bay a copy of all land use plan amendment applications, and that's a recent revision after further discussion with the port, and those should be outlined in a change sheet in your backup. Each goal received comments from external agencies, particularly for Goal 7, we received comments from, as mentioned before, the Tampa Bay Port Authority, as well as the county's Conservation and Environmental Lands Management Department. There were some suggested changes, and we did address those, and the ones that were not addressed... And the ones that were not addressed, we acknowledged in staff responses, which are in your backup as well. And we did not receive any formal objections. Planning Commission staff has reviewed this, the proposed minor modifications of the existing policies listed under the new established Goal Seven, and have found them to be consistent with the intent of the existing policy language of the comprehensive plan, including under Objective 10, which discusses how development orders shall not be issued unless development is suitable for the physical conditions of the land. Objective 13, which describes that new development and redevelopment shall not adversely impact environmentally sensitive areas. Objective 14, which states that new residential development and redevelopment shall provide open space to protect natural resources. Objective 28, which recognizes the importance of protecting waterfront communities, recreational and commercial working water fronts and shorelines. Objective 31, which discusses the protection of natural resources necessary to sustain agricultural activities. Objective 35, which encourages clustering of structures to promote open spaces through the use of site design techniques, as well as Policy 3-1.1 under the current Community Design Component, which explores the opportunity to create incentives for green developments through LEED or LEED or other similar programs. The Planning Commission found that this proposed text amendment, HCCPA 23-27, is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Each speaker will be given three minutes. The first speaker I have signed up is virtual Lanay Latrell. Ms. Latrell, are you there?
Lanay Latrell, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
I am here. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. We hear you. Go ahead.
Again, I would like to, thank you. I would like to remind all the commissioners that these stakeholders that are continually mentioned are primarily developers and their lawyers. They are not the existing residents who live in these areas. What I find missing from this plan is strong language protecting these areas of natural preservation. It's very much like white space in your life. If you do not plan for it, eventually, it will never exist. What we've found continually, over and over again, is that developers easily get permits to destroy these ecologically sensitive areas, specifically my area and Plant City. I am asking you to motion for stronger wording to your plan, put teeth to it, so that when your Hillsborough County planners make decisions, like Krista Kelly and some of your amazing planners, they agree or don't agree with something, their decision needs to carry more weight when it comes to a municipality level such as Plant City. You can't put the protection of ecosystems completely on the shoulders of the EPC and SWIFTMUD. They do not have the authority that you think they do. I have spoken with them extensively in protection of our areas. Rural and preservation areas are being decimated by your fault assumption, that these agencies can protect these natural resources from developers. I'd like to address a few comments quickly. I've heard mentioned that farmers are being devalued. Farmers are not being devalued, but what is being devalued is the people that are left behind after the farmers sell and put their land to developers. We are the ones who are left behind, who pay the price when developers move in. Commissioner Wustel, you also mentioned the Farm Bureau and championed them. If you look at their Board of Directors, many of their Board of Directors are lawyers and are affiliated with developers. Ms. Kemp, rural residents have reached out to state legislators to protect our rural areas, but they say they support our ideas, but they never show up in hearings or give us letters to protect us. Ms. Corbett, normal residents don't have the money to even get to the point of hiring lawyers to get before a judge to appeal the decisions that are overturned by municipalities. Please, all of you, remember that growth is not mandatory, it is by choice. You have the power to decide the capacity that we, as Hillsborough County, want to accommodate. We do not have to accommodate the explosive growth that developers are asking for. Let's find some moderation and plan for preservation at the same time as we are planning for growth. Thank you so much for your time, and I, guys, I really appreciate the opportunity to speak on the virtual option.
Thank you, Ms. Latrell. Thank you, ma'am.
So, thank you guys for all your...
All right, thank you for your comments. Next is Travis Latrell. Travis, go ahead.
Thank you so much, Travis Latrell. I'm part of the Northeast Master Plan, and I'm working with Krista Kelly, as well as the Plant City planners. And one of the issues that is being failed to address is that we're not identifying conservation and environmentally sensitive areas first. We're actually being asked to identify where industrial could go first, and then we're being asked where commercial and mixed use could go second. I find there's a huge disparity between what your rural agricultural residents are asking for, as well as what your survey has, you know, clearly identified that the public wants. So I think we need to identify where these areas should go. And while I don't want to devalue my own property to agricultural, and I don't want to devalue any of my neighbors' properties either, I think it's really prudent for all of us to say, in these environmentally sensitive areas, these things need to be protected. I'm not certain how that can happen, but what I do know is that east of Charlie Taylor Road, north of I-4, and south of Knight's Griffin is an environmentally sensitive area, but it's only an environmentally sensitive area as stated by the Army Corps of Engineers. There's nothing official on the books that says it's environmentally sensitive. And if a developer wants to develop in that area, they should have to prove beyond a shadow of a doubt and with a lot of scrutiny that this area has to be developed. I mean, all of Midtown and Plant City is being overlooked because it's too expensive for development. Rural land is cheap for them. They buy it up, and then they just run the process, and I need Hillsborough County to do what my wife suggests, put some teeth behind, you know, what they say they can do and should do. And it may come to the point where somebody has to step in at the county level or at the state level and make it very, very clear that if this does not have to be done, that it shouldn't be done. Because the three questions I ask myself is, do I need, does this need to be done? Does this need to be done by me, and done by me right now? And what's happening is the developers actually dictating to the city opportunities for growth. And then the city is choosing willy-nilly to see what mud sticks to the wall, and it seems like Hillsborough County is completely helpless in the fact of actually controlling the environment. What are we doing in the plan to ensure that the agricultural way of life, the rural way of life, is being sustained? Plant City added, you know, some Agricultural, you know, 1 and Agricultural 2.5 into their code. They could use those parameters to have ag land in the city, but they're not actually implementing it.
Thank you, Mr. Latrell.
Because developers don't want to do it.
Thank you, Mr. Latrell. Sorry, you're out of time. Thank you, Mr. Latrell, for your comments. Gretchen Hope?
Thank you, Gretchen Hope, District 4, Rain Frog Lane, Plant City. I've reached out to all of you about an alarming statistic for Hillsborough County. There are three counties out of 67 in the state of Florida with zero to minimal connectivity to the Florida Wildlife Corridor, and we're one of them. There are opportunities for us to change that statistic, but the time is now. The Florida Wildlife Corridor is a statewide network of natural lands and waters that provides habitat for wildlife and facilitates their movement across the state. It is essential for maintaining biodiversity, supporting healthy ecosystems, and preserving native species in Florida. The corridor also plays a crucial role in protecting water quality, promoting ecotourism, and enhancing the overall resilience of Florida's natural environment in the face of climate change and development. A beautiful representation of the corridor's success is documented in Carlton Ward Jr.'s movie, Path of the Panther. I recommend everyone in this room and watching to invest the time and their life in viewing this life-changing documentary. On that note, in Section B7, Policy 14.7, I want to encourage connectivity to existing trails and less fragmentation. There are opportunities to maximize our connectivity and avoid fragmentation. Also, not only does Hillsborough County need connectivity to the corridor, we also need more wildlife underpasses, sorry, and signage on our roads, especially Highway 60. I am collecting data for evidence and working with FWC as well. Thank you for Objective 31. Policy 31.6, here is another amazing opportunity for Hillsborough County to do something big for our county and ultimately our precious state of Florida. I propose we have a board of qualified individuals working together on something similar to what Polk County did with Polk Forever. They work together on a millage of .02% to property taxes annually for 20 years, and the funds generated are used to finance a bond issue of up to $75 million to purchase and manage environmentally significant lands, or purchase conservation easements to protect working ranch and forest lands from development. Let's do this, Hillsborough Forever. Again, I do want to thank the staff for their hard work and efforts put into the new plan. I do think that we can all work together and set examples for other counties, you know, in Hillsborough, in Florida, and let us be the example, and let's change this map. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hope. Well said. Regina Hernandez, I think she may have walked out. Regina, you still here? Okay. Anybody else to speak on this? All right, we'll move on to board discussion. I think, planning, I see you're in the queue here. Go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to mention in response to some of the speakers that there is a section on environmental and sustainability within the comprehensive plan. It was previously updated. It has some, a lot of additional goals, objectives, and policies related to environmental preservation, significant wildlife habitat. Wildlife corridors has an entire, its own objective and policies. So these are, this is not the only place in the comprehensive plan that those issues are addressed. There's a whole nother section that does that as well.
Thank you for that. Commissioner Kemp?
And I'm, just to say, I've seen the film twice, and I know that the, I have noticed how the corridor goes, and that it doesn't really come through Hillsborough County, although there's only a few spots on I-4 which could act as wildlife passages. And I've asked with FDOT, ever since I've learned this, about why, within Hillsborough County, since there's, it's really only in Polk County on, you know, the area closest to Hillsborough County and Hillsborough County, which could suffice for a wildlife corridor, because I-4 is acting to really contain biodiversity and very harmful to the state. And so I think, I'm not sure where to go with that, but I agree, and I'd be up for talking to you more about it. And I've contacted the offices there and, you know, have questions. But the other question, or the other issue that I wanted you to know about, what you described in Pasco County, sounds like our ELAP program, which has been around for 40 years now, and is very robust. And we do have a set aside here in Hillsborough County that, I think it was 79% of the voters voted for, it's been 18 years now, every precinct in Hillsborough County supporting the set aside of funding for the ELAP program. That's the second 20-year program it's been. So I think the Pasco program is, I'm guessing, from what you're describing, is kind of modeled after the Hillsborough program. Yeah. But anyway, I just wanted to let you know that.
Commissioner Wustel?
Speaking of ELAP, maybe Mr. Gormly, you can help me with this specifically, or Ms. Sornita. On 7.22, page 22 of this, how do we make sure that this doesn't, this buffering and setback doesn't in any way, if it's next to a bona fide agricultural use, impact them? Because if you require for, I don't know, the buffering or setback, an additional 50 feet on 1,000 feet of a farmer's land, well, that's 50,000 feet of land that could have been cropped or grazed cattle on. And I know it's something in our current ELAP program that I'm going to be working on getting fixed. It happened to them, and they weren't prepared for it. And I want to get that drawn back. So how do we make sure that this creation of development standards provide buffers around ELAP property, except for when adjacent to bona fide Florida Department of Agriculture recognized uses? Like, how do we do that, to make sure they're in no way artificially impacted?
Well, two thoughts on that. One, this policy would have to be implemented through something that went into the Land Development Code. And so when that Land Development Code amendment was brought forward, you would have the opportunity to ensure that the buffers were appropriate. But if you wanted to add some wording to Policy 7.2.2 to that effect, that is also an option as well.
Yeah, because I want the blanket, you know, we talked about this being an umbrella statement, and I want that to be that, but good intentions, and then, and it comes around to the land use code, then all of a sudden you have this in here, and it bites them later, so...
And I would add to that, that, you know, the buffers around ELAP land, typically, the buffers are there to help preserve the ELAP functions and burning and things that new residences might be challenged with. So I think it would be a legitimate distinction to make between development, housing, those type of uses, and ag use from an ELAP land. I think the two, I mean, there's differences between them, but I think it's a really legitimate distinction to be made, and we can be sure that that is...
Yeah, because we've worked recently, I mean, speaking of us working hard to keep farmers here, we changed the land code, the development codes for their farm worker housing, but they developed something. And so blanket statements, it can be dangerous, and I don't, you see what I'm saying?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Okay. So do I, I mean, do we need to, do I need to make that amendment now, or is that something that you're assuring me we will protect in land use code?
We will protect that in the land use code, whether that's added to this or not. Understand that concern and that sensitivity, and the rationale for making a distinction between those type of uses.
Okay, then I'll move for approval.
Excellent points. Okay. All right, motion by Commissioner Wustel, I think I have two seconds, by Commissioner Kemp and Myers. No other discussion. Please record your votes.
Motion carries six to zero.
All right, great. We will move on to the last one, B8, planning.
I get the privilege to close out tonight with Goal Eight. This goal is in regards to economic development. And I'll read Goal Eight. It says, quote, "Seek land use and development patterns which will promote employment and economic growth." So under that, there are a number of proposed changes. Under the goal, there is introductory language. It's not a policy, it's not an objective, it's just introductory language. We worked with county staff, and we made some modifications to that introductory language to address some of the concerns that they had raised. There is clarifying, there's policy language clarifying target industries as ones defined by state statute. Also encouraging the county to promote employment in balance to the population seeking employment within unincorporated county. Other proposed changes include removing references to economic development areas and provide a broader reference to sites or areas, and allows additional flexibility during site design within those particular areas. There's new language supporting incentive efforts and flexibility in the prioritization of public infrastructure in locating target industries in areas identified as redevelopment pilot project areas. Other changes include new policy guidance related to the protection of lands planned for office and industrial uses. for office and industrial uses. There's also additional policy guidance related to the ability of the county to provide financial or regulatory incentives in promoting quality economic development. As has been stated previously tonight, the edge element is proposed to be sunsetted, and several policies transitioned over to the updated flu elements. Other policies from the edge element have already been incorporated into the mobility, recreation, and open space, and intergovernmental coordination elements. Edge policies related to housing, employment, economic development, public health, and land use have all been spread throughout the goals presented to you this evening. Staff also updated terminology for several former edge policies to ensure overall consistency with current practice and to bring them into compliance with the plan's 20-year horizon. It should be noted that all deleted policies and maps, either within the edge or any other portion of the flu, are attached in your backup for this section. As always, we worked with our partner agencies and received valuable feedback from them that we, as Planning Commission staff, believe has created several improvements to the proposed policy language that's in front of you tonight. Planning Commission staff worked with partner agencies up until the 11th hour, fine-tuning and updating policy language, ensuring best practices related to economic development are provided for in the proposed policy guidance. I'm glad to report that through those numerous meetings and discussions with our partners, we believe we've addressed all their discussion points, and there were no formal objections Related to the overall timing of growth, staff found that the proposed policy language is consistent with Flu Policy 2.2. This policy sets out when it may be appropriate to consider the expansion of the urban service area and priorities for infrastructure investment. These policies were relevant during the last major expansion known as the energy industrial part. Multiple policies within Goal Eight are consistent with existing adopted economic development policies related to preferred locations of employment generating uses, promotion of certain residential support uses such as daycare uses being located within proximity to employment, the prioritization of employment uses in specific areas over other non-industrial uses being developed, and the promotion of home-based businesses. Finally, the proposed policies are also consistent with environmental and sustainability policies related to the protection of surface waters by requiring a site plan-controlled zoning district in the limited circumstances when the site is located adjacent to a major water body. So based on that, the Planning Commission is recommending tonight that the proposed text amendment, HCCPA 23-28, be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan. I'm available if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Each speaker will get three minutes. I've got three speakers signed up. David Coleman, are you still here? Brittany Pantone, are you here? No, and I think Regina Hernandez left as well. Anyone else to speak on this? All right, we'll go into discussion. Commissioner Wustel.
Great job tonight, Planning Commission. I move for approval.
Second.
Got a motion for approval by Commissioner Wustel, second by Commissioner Cohen. Please record your vote.
Motion carries six to zero.
Okay. Finally, I'll just need a motion on resolution for transmittal of the above text amendments to the Future Land Use Section of the Comprehensive Plan, with exception of B four and B six, which we've moved to continue. Can I get a motion?
Some of.
Got a motion by Commissioner Cohen, second by Commissioner Myers. Please record your vote.
Motion carries six to zero.
All right. With that, we are adjourned.